Good evening, I'd like to call to order July 17, 2008, regular meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board.
Ms. Capitan, would you please read the opening statement?
Are your mics on? I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be opened. Adequate notice has been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 11, 2008, said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and Trytown News. Second, on January 11, 2008, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 11, 2008, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, Preventoryum Road, Howell, New Jersey. Special Notice in accordance with the Fire Prevention Code. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code, be advised that this facility is designed with three emergency exits for your safety. The locations are as follows. Upon exiting the meeting room to the rear, they are to your immediate left, an immediate right, and at the front of the meeting room at the left of the dais. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Row call. Mr. Burgess?
Here.
Mr. Frazee?
Here.
Mr. Seiya?
Present.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Mr. Tantillo?
Here.
Mr. Vislacki?
Here.
Mr. Macastro?
Here.
Mrs. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Dalton?
Here.
Mr. Morello? Has resigned.
We'll talk about that.
Yeah. And Chairman Estevez?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. We have some minutes on the agenda from the regular meeting of 5:15.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, sorry. Please rise for the pledge. Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for our troops. Okay, back to minutes. We have minutes on the agenda for approval from our regular meeting of May 15, 2008. I believe we had a full board that evening, so everybody's eligible to vote on the minutes.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes.
Mr. Vislacki and Mr. Schneider.
Pauline Feather?
Aye.
Mr. Macastro, do we have any vouchers?
Yes, they will review it and they appear fine.
Okay, thank you.
We have some correspondence. Our first piece of correspondence, would you read that into the record, please?
Sure, we have a memo from Bruce Davis, Township Clerk, dated June 25, 2008. Amend the land use zone change Elon Block 184, Lots 7, 8, 9, 10, and 14, Ordinance Number 0-0818.
It has just come to my attention, not more than 15 minutes ago, that we have correspondence related to that amendment, ordinance amendment, that was sent to Mr. Cucharo. Would you address that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Yesterday evening, a letter from the Township Attorney was faxed to my office regarding the proposed ordinance. The upshot of it is, is that Mr. Bonjivani, and I guess the council discovered that there was an inaccuracy in the ordinance as drafted, that identified the subject area as being zoned ARE-6, when in fact it is zoned ARE-2. I happen to agree with that interpretation. It was subject of litigation and the zoning map of the municipality was changed to reflect an ARE-2 zoning for the area. Mr. Bonjivani has requested that, in light of this, that the board proceed and consider the ordinance, however, in considering the ordinance, assume that eventually it will be modified to indicate that the site is ARE-2 rather than ARE-6, so that when we're considering it tonight, for consistency with the master plan, that we insert, you know, 2 for 6 in deliberating about that. The Township Council has voted to consider the ordinance on second reading next on August 12, 2008.
Mr. Cucharo, wasn't this property rezoned from ARE-2 to 6, and then it was, another suit was filed to, in the Superior Court, to bring it back to an ARE-2 zone?
I believe it was sometime in 2002. In northern Howell, there was an ordinance that re-zoned a large swath of land to ARE-6. There were multiple suits that were filed. None of the suits were heard at the same time, but they were never consolidated, so they each stood on their own. The judge ordered in this particular suit that the zoning from ARE-2 to ARE-6, after looking at the planning reports and underlying data for it, was arbitrary, and ruled that it should be returned to the pre-existing ARE-2 zoning.
So we're being asked to review an ordinance to see if it's consistent with the master plan, and then it's going to be amended after, it's going to be amended after we vote on if it's consistent with the...
That's what the letter indicates, that prior to second reading, they would modify the ordinance so that it read ARE-2, and they considered it on second reading. And Mr. Bonjivani, I think, from his letter, said he was going to look into whether, you know, procedurally, you know, what needed to be done to make sure everything was correct.
Mr. Chairman, if I'm not mistaken, our maps are correct. I mean, according to Jennifer, everything that we looked at on our current map was zoned correctly. This area, I don't believe, was changed to ARE-2. I believe it is ARE-6.
No, it was judicially changed, back to ARE-2. And the Township Engineering Department, which has, is the, excuse me, are the people that do the official zoning map, they changed it to reflect ARE-2. It was on the map as ARE-6 for a while still, after the court order, but it should not have been that way.
So we're all in agreement that it is ARE-2?
I am in agreement that it is ARE-2.
It's ARE-2.
All right.
I could testify to that.
Mrs. Capitan, don't we have a meeting on August 7?
Yes.
Okay. Well, no, since we have a meeting on August 7, and since I'd like to review the ordinance that's correct, to see if it's consistent with the master plan, I'm not comfortable in voting in an ordinance that's not written correctly. I don't know, you know, I'd like to get some comment from fellow board members, but I think the ordinance should be written correctly before we vote on it being consistent with the master plan.
I wholeheartedly agree, because if there's any modifications that we're not aware of, you know, then we're led to believe something that's been presented. I mean, I'm not saying anything will change in that regard, but if it's going to be amended, how do we know what's going to be amended and what's not going to be amended? So I agree with the chairman on this one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I also agree that the protocol call should be that we have a clean, clear-cut, defined ordinance before us, before we even consider it for adoption and moving forward. You know, the problem here is the chain of custody. I have no idea where the chain of custody would, whose hands it touches, and who has the ability to articulate the document and refine it prior to it even reaching us. Therefore, I am uncomfortable, because I don't know the process.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The council doesn't have another meeting until August 12, so you're not going to get anything in front of you, other than this, on August 7. So this is what you're going to have to look at on August 7.
Couldn't the Township Attorney make the changes and then submit it back to the Planning Board? If the only thing that's changing is an ARE-2 designation instead of a 6, I mean, I don't understand what the issue is.
Mr. Chairman? Wait a minute. I don't understand why the ordinance can't be corrected before the August 12 meeting. I'm still not understanding that.
7.
They have a meeting on August 12.
I don't think they can informally change it without a meeting. That's a substantial difference, ARE-2 to ARE-6, so I think the council would have to make sure and be in agreement with whatever modifications, you know, were being made. Although, practical matter, I don't, I mean, obviously, there's the one change, and I don't think it would be a big deal. But the fact is, you know, unless the council has some kind of special meeting before that time, they're not going to be able to do it. The only other issue is that we have 35 days from the referral to the Planning Board to give the council our comments. If the 35 days elapses and we don't provide any comments, they're not obligated to listen to whatever we send up.
Mr. Chairman?
Can you let, can you just hand the rest of...
So I think the issue, you know, for this board tonight is, if it means, if it's significant enough to the board that they feel they need to see the ARE-2 rather than the ARE-6, then I still think that a comment needs to be made back to the governing body within the 35 days, saying that, you know, you didn't review it for consistency for the following reasons that we've just enumerated, and requesting that a, you know, new ordinance be sent down to us. But, just so everyone knows, the council, you know, is not obligated to do that. They could proceed, you know, and vote on second reading.
Mr. Schneider, do you have a comment?
Yes, I'm comfortable with the recommendations originally made by our attorney. We know what it is. It's going to be ARE-2, and I don't see why this should be delaying anything.
Only I made any recommendations, just for the record. I just sort of laid out what the issues were.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yeah, that was, the Planning Board had changed the zone to ARE-6. It was a 25-mile area. I was involved in that area. I wound up suing the township to get it back. It was changed back to ARE-2. That area is changed back to ARE-2. The township does have documentation to that from Judge Reason.
Just to be clear, though, for the record, all of those cases were individual cases. They were not consolidated cases. So I think Mr. Tantillo is correct in his chronology for his site and for the overall. But I just want to make clear that Mr. Tantillo's site was not part of the Elon litigation. It was just heard during the same time period.
Yes.
Can I ask Mr. Cucharo, just for, we're not talking about whether or not a change from ARE-2 to ARE-6, or ARE-6 to ARE-2 is consistent with the master plan. Am I correct?
No.
We're talking about whether or not the low and affordable income 8 is consistent, this new proposed change to that lot, correct? That's what we're talking about.
Well, we're talking, I think, well, two things. The concern that the board had was just that they wanted to see the proper number in there. But what we're talking about is, when it gets changed to ARE-2, that the ART-2 designation and the ordinance that was referred to us is consistent with our master plan.
That the ARE-2...
That the proposed ordinance that was sent down to us is consistent.
With the, with what's in the master plan?
With our master plan, yeah.
Well, it's my understanding, this is a result of litigation involving an application that dealt with affordable housing, and I don't think it's consistent with the master plan, nor do I think it has to be. Am I correct about that?
Yeah.
That is correct, yes. Okay. Just wanted to make sure. And that's because it involves COA?
No.
It is not consistent with the master plan that we have right now. However, it is the subject of litigation, and the litigation would then place the site in the housing plan, which is an element of the master plan, so it would ultimately be consistent when that master plan, if and when that master plan element, were to be adopted and subsequently endorsed by the governing body and submitted to COA. So as the master plan stands right now, the area is not identified for affordable housing. However, because of litigation and the subsequent inclusion in the master plan, it would then subsequently be included. But as of right now, it's not.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Schneider.
I'd like to move that this amended land use zone change is consistent with our master plan, as ARE-2.
If I could just advise the board for a moment on that, if you're inclined to vote tonight, there's no, here's the impact if you say, no, it's not consistent with the master plan. Doesn't mean that the ordinance cannot be adopted. And certainly, the report that will go back to the council would have the additional discussion that Jen just issued. All it does is create a different vote requirement and adoption requirement for the Township Council.
Ms. Beam, you had made comment that it's not consistent with the master plan as currently written. I'd like you to outline why it's not consistent with the master plan, and I'd like you to put that on the record.
The area that the subject site is located in is in an area of low-density, single-family housing, and that's how it is put forth in the master plan, whether that be through two-acre lots or six-acre lots. One would not consider a two-acre lot to be high-density. So the area immediately in and around the subject site, whether it be ARE-2 or ARE-6, envisions low-density, single-family housing. In the northwest, moderate, kind of west, you have SED zoning, which is, you know, more industrial-based, et cetera, and that's consistent with our zone plan and master plan. So the master plan has not identified this area as a recommendation for apartments or any kind of density beyond, whether it be two-acre lots or six-acre lots. But it does identify residential as appropriate, as a, you know, whether it be, you know, single-family detached homes. But as I said earlier, you know, this is the subject of litigation, based on the fact that it was not included in our second round housing element, which is an element of the master plan, and subsequently, there was a settlement of that litigation, which has now, you know, that's what the zoning is basically reflecting. And should the zoning be put in place by the council, the site would then be included in the housing plan that has to be submitted to COA by the end of this calendar year, and at that point, it would be included in the master plan and therefore consistent. But as it stands right now, the master plan does not envision apartments or any kind of density of that nature.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Yes.
If I could just ask Jen a question. In your professional experience in dealing with, you know, dozens of other municipalities, it's, I think it would be a fair statement to say that it's common, because you're dealing with very discreet pieces of property, that the master plan's housing element, Fair Share Plan, identifies specific pieces for inclusionary developments that are not particularly consistent with the land use element in those areas.
That's absolutely correct. In most instances, it's inconsistent until it's inclusion in the housing element, and then subsequent amendment of the land use element to maintain all, consistency between all of your elements. So it's not an inconsistent situation. It's something that we find very often in dealing with affordable housing sites.
But as it stands right now, we're charged with, we're being asked relating to the master plan as it stands, prior to amendment, if this is consistent or not. Am I interpreting that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Jennifer, I understand this is a result of litigation. However, I'm just curious that this particular parcel, I know we've talked about COA requirements, the requirements that COA issues, how does this land or this piece of property fit in with those requirements, and is it adequate?
There is some question about whether or not the site meets the site suitability criteria, and that was discussed at length through, I guess, the negotiations with respect to the litigation. The issue is the planning area designation. It does, you know, it has access to a public road and et cetera. However, as I've said before, you know, if the utilities are available, you know, COA tends to advocate for the production of affordable housing units versus holding hard and fast to every site suitability criteria because of the fact that, quite frankly, in a community like this, you don't have a lot of areas that are in a planning area 1, 2, and there are no centers. So while it doesn't meet every single site suitability criteria, it doesn't necessarily mean that the units would not be creditworthy at COA.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Beam, isn't it true that, that part of the settlement is a requirement that the developer obtain the COA approval?
That the developer participate and provide any and all information necessary to get COA to certify that the site is suitable for affordable housing. That is correct. If it's not certified as suitable, is this developer allowed to build this project? I don't know the answer to that question.
The developer also, it's more than that, the developer is obligated to help defend the plan before COA.
And, and just so that we're all clear, in January of this year, did this board approve the resolution settling the case, which is where this ordinance came from?
Yes, it authorized the settlement.
We authorized it with respect to these details?
Yeah, that, the settlement attached to it a concept plan, and the text of the settlement discussed what would be on the site. This ordinance is meant to codify that settlement.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Being that Councilwoman Dalton brought up that point, that in January, we voted to approve this. I wasn't at the last council meeting, but I did get to watch, and I know it was, you know, heavily debated. But one of the things that struck me was that, I recall Councilwoman Shoemaker stating that during the 11 years that this was in litigation, that she never saw what really led to this agreement.
Is that correct?
That's correct. That's what she said.
Right. And I know that when we made this decision in January to vote on it, we were led by our attorney of the events. So I kind of find it disturbed that the Planning Board understood the agreement and had a vote for it, and we basically understood why we had a vote to approve this resolution, and yet not all the council members had to agree on this. So we were kind of put into a catch-22, and it's a little disturbing that, you know, we're saying that we voted for it, but yet council...
Go ahead.
Didn't totally understand why the events were. And as a matter of fact, council for COA stated that he was going to give you the summary of how it got to where it got. So, to say that we voted for it, and you guys didn't understand it... Do you understand where I'm going?
No, I understand where you're going, Rob. I'm not sure, A, that the council voted on a resolution in December, before the Planning Board voted on it. I'm not quite sure. I think the comments were sort of directed at 11 years' worth of history on litigation, and how did it get to that point? It's my understanding that the Planning Board, or the representatives regarding the Planning Board, had more involvement in the negotiation of the resolution than the council. Now, I could be...
I'm going to stop you right there. You're not correct. That statement's incorrect.
I can tell you that I believe this whole thing is attorney-client privilege, to begin with, what anyone's negotiations were with regard to that. But if the board wants to indulge me for one moment, I don't know if you have an objection...
That'll be fine.
It's really not my recollection that we were driving this process. We were part of the process, certainly. We were a partner of the Township Council, as we should be. And we certainly participated in the litigation with the Township Council, and were on many occasions successful, and we provided a solid front in doing it, once again, as we should. I can tell you that I was not one of the primary drafters of the settlement agreement. I was certainly a reader of it, a commenter upon it, and an advisor to you regarding it, but it's not my recollection that the Planning Board was the primary body involved in the process.
That being said, I would like to get back on point to what we're here to do tonight. What we're here to do tonight is to decide and vote on whether we feel that the ordinance is consistent with the master plan as it's written now, not when it's going to be amended as it's written now. I'd like to get back on point, and that's what we're charged to do here tonight. So I have a motion, I believe I had a motion.
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like, I want to clarify Mr. Schneider's motion. He says that he, it was consistent. I like to say it's not consistent with the master plan for the reasons stated by our planner, and that that be sent to the council.
Okay, I understand that, but first, we have to entertain Mr. Schneider's motion.
I'll begin by motion.
Okay, what would you like to amend your motion to, Mr. Schneider?
That the memo from Bruce Davis dated 6/25/08 to amend the land use zone change Elon with the blocks and lots, ordinance 0-0818, to be approved with, that it's not consistent with our master plan, but the recommendation is that it is ARE-2 zone.
Can I just have one, ask one question, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You can certainly do that, if you want, but just to let you know, you also have the option of making additional comments. So if you wanted to, you could say it is inconsistent with our master plan as it is drafted today. However, it is one of the sites pursuant to our settlement agreement, and pursuant to our intent to comply with the settlement agreement, that we intend to include in the Fair Share Plan of our housing element.
I would like that attached to the motion.
But clearly, Mr. Chair, the beginning part of the motion is that, beginning part of any memo, is that as drafted today. You know, it is inconsistent.
Before we get a second, I would like to request that Ron and Jennifer and Mark put together a detailed memo outlining, point by point, why it's not consistent with the master plan as it's written today, and put all the comments in the memo that are part of the record this evening. Can we do that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion from Mr. Schneider and a second from Mr. Frazee.
Mr. Frazee?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Frazee?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislacki?
Yes.
Mr. Macastro?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
I'm staying.
Chairman Estevez?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Okay, our second piece of correspondence is a memo from Bruce Davis dated June 25, 2008. Amend land use to delete the prohibition against food takeout from restaurants located in the HD2 zone. It's ordinance that's going to be amended, is ordinance number 08, I'm sorry, 0-08-23. I'll open up the floor for comments from board members.
Mr. Chair, it was always my understanding that the HD2 zone, or for Route 33, there was a certain element to Route 33 of, it was not going to be like Route 9. I don't know what the objective is today, because I've not heard that, maybe Councilwoman Dalton can, you know, comment on that, because it's always been, from what I've gathered all the time, included in the master plan, is that it's supposed to be a commercial, light-industrial, you know, it was supposed to be a technology corridor, or some kind of business corridor, and not so much commercial entities like food and stuff like that and takeout. And that was the ultimate goal, and that's why the ordinances were written at that time. So if that's no longer the goal, if we're going to look to make Route 33 the next Route 9, then, I mean, I think we really should look into that.
Well, wait a minute, there's a question on the floor here, and it's really a question about the direction of the zoning in the HD2 zone, and it was, and the question was asked of Councilwoman... asked of Councilwoman Dalton. Do you have any comment?
The only change that this ordinance makes is to allow restaurants, which would be permitted in the area regardless, to allow for the use of takeout, not drive-throughs, but takeout.
Okay.
That means that the cabin, which currently has takeout, that means that the Wawa, which currently has takeout, that those would be operating in conformity with the zone, rather than right now, when you stop on your way home, or you stop on your way into work in the morning, you get a cup of coffee, you're supposed to drink it inside the Wawa, you're not really allowed to take it out. That's all this does, doesn't change anything else.
I don't see that the change in the ordinance, though, specifically states that there will be no take, there will be no drive-through. So is that in the original ordinance, that drive-throughs aren't going to, aren't allowed? And is that going to stay in the ordinance?
Drive-throughs aren't allowed now. There's no language about drive-throughs. All this does is change, is allow for the use of takeout.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I might, looking at the ordinance, it's actually the second-to-last page of the memo from Mr. Davis. It identifies permitted uses in the zone as restaurants without drive-throughs. So it basically just eliminates the without takeout and leaves the without drive-through. So that is still enumerated in the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You know, all these ordinances and our master plan is a living document. 10 years from now, you're going to have 1,000 senior citizens living on Route 33, you're going to want to take out food, and I don't even see why the council doesn't amend the ordinance to allow drive-through, because that's the next thing they should do. So the way this is written is certainly should be approved.
I concur with that, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have any other comment from any other board members?
I have to agree with the comments of Mr. Schneider.
Then I'd like to get a motion on what the board's pleasure is.
I'd like to move that.
Can I have a second?
I can second that.
Mr. Schneider and Mr. Saye.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Frazee?
Yes.
Mr. Saye?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislaki?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Abstain.
Chairman Estvez?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Our next piece of correspondence is a letter dated June 26, 2008, from Allison Hastings. She's a planner from Delaware Resource Group, and it's regarding the environmental resource inventory for Howell Township. They're requesting that we have a public hearing to review the document. I think that's more of a calendar issue. We have to look at the calendar.
Well, October 2nd looks good.
And she had given you, just to fill in the public and members of the board that aren't aware of it, the township got a grant to do a resource inventory. The Environmental Commission has been liaison with the planner from the Delaware group that specializes in this. It's a pretty intensive document, and it does outline the entire resource inventory for the township. So generally, you would have some public hearing before, because it should be adopted as part of the master plan.
I just have one question, Chairman. I just want to make sure with the timing, we're not in jeopardy of losing any grant money if we do it in October, are we?
No.
Okay.
I believe it's got to be done before November.
Okay.
So we can put them on for October 2nd?
Yes.
Okay, that'll be great.
I'll send a letter out to her tomorrow and tell her that the board agreed to put her on for October 2nd.
Yeah, great. Our final piece of correspondence is a letter dated July 2, 2008, from Frank Asensiano Esquire regarding Frank Pincus, case number SD2897.
Mr. Chair, I think Mr. Acasano is here, if he wants to.
Sorry about the mispronunciation. I apologize.
That's close enough. I've heard worse.
Okay. Floor is yours, Counselor.
This board gave Mr. Pincus-- Speak into the mic, please. I'm sorry. This board gave Mr. Pincus final major subdivision approval back in January of this year. It's for a small, it's a five-lot subdivision at the corner of Casino Drive and Ketchum Road. No immediate development is planned. Mr. Pincus is just creating lots at this time. And our plan at the time incorporated what was then the riparian buffer that the Howell Township ordinance required, 300 feet. That ordinance has since been invalidated. And we also did the design based on the belief that the Manasquan River in that area is a category-one waterway. Turns out, it isn't. So what we're seeking from the board, and what I just wanted to acquaint the board with briefly tonight, is amended final subdivision approval to reflect a correct stream conservation limit, which I'll show in a minute.
Mr. Chair, in terms of that, you can make your request and file your application, but starting to show exhibits and things like that, it will be getting into the hearing process.
All I wanted to do is to show where the line was, where the lines were, and where the new line should be. I understand that this is not binding. Really, what I'm asking for the board to do is, if you can, give us an accelerated hearing on the submission for two reasons. I see you wincing.
He's not building anything there.
Yeah, well, let me give you my reasons. First of all, we don't believe the changes are significant. I'm sure if you take a look at this map, you'll see that. And number two, we have an agreement with the County of Monmouth to give them 11 acres to add, to be added to the Manasquan Greenway, plus Mr. Pincus is going to give them a portion of land along property that he owns that is not subject of this application for better access to the Manasquan River. But we can't do any of that until we get this problem squared away, to make a long story short. So if, I understand this is non-binding, Ron, I would just like the board to see that what we're proposing will overall not have that great an effect. In some places, the proposed stream conservation easement line will even exceed what the DEP requires. So we think it's a good deal, but by the same token, the 300-foot requirement that Howell had ate up a substantial portion of real estate.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to know, does the applicant have an LOI, letter of interpretation from the DEP stating that this is not a category-one waterway?
Well, that wouldn't be an LOI. I'd ask you, I'll defer to Mr. Savino, the township engineer, who's the one who really started us on this, and we've done subsequent investigations with our environmentalists, and it's not a category-one waterway there, just not. If it is--
The Manasquan River's not category-one.
Not there.
Mr. Chair, this is, this will all be, when the application is submitted, this will be part of what our professionals look at to confirm the--
I agree. Here's what I think we should do. I respect that you want to show us your exhibits, but, you know, we'll meet you halfway in the middle, we'll try to get you on the calendar as quickly as possible. I don't want to start taking, and I know you don't think it's testimony, but I don't want to start taking testimony this evening. You know, we certainly are sensitive to the fact that your client wants to have these changes, and that he's being a good citizen and helping, you know, with open space in the county and the town, so we don't want to hold that up. We'll do the best we can to get you on the calendar as quickly as possible.
Mr. Chair, also, just to let Mr. Acasano know, our professional review conference is the first Tuesday of every month, so we have one coming up imminently. So if you can get the documents to us--
Okay.
--you know, we can certainly get that process underway and speed your return to the board.
Okay, that's fine. That's all we can ask.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Yes, you too.
Okay, let's move on to resolutions. Our first resolution is Ashley Furniture.
Do you want to discuss the COA committee?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you. We do have one more piece of correspondence. It's an email. You might not have received it in your packet, from our township manager, Helen Schlegel. The governing body is putting together a committee to discuss and get a vision on our COA requirements and help in putting our fair share plan together. I've been asked to pick two nominees from our board to serve on the committee. It was requested that I, as chairman, serve on the committee, and I would be interested in doing that. And I also would like to appoint Curtis Vislaki to the chair, based on him being the chairman of the master plan subcommittee.
The only thing is, though, they're suggesting that the meetings be during the day, and I don't know, Mr. Vislaki, would that be a problem?
I can make arrangements to my schedule.
Okay.
And I can do the same, as long as there's 48 to 72 hours notice, so could you--
Yeah.
Can you let Mrs. Schlegel know that?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along, resolutions. First resolution is Ashley Furniture, case number SP900A. A resolution approving an amended preliminary and final site plan. Eligible voters are Burgess, Saye, Schneider, Nacastro, Clark, Dalton, and Estvez.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to move it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Saye and Mr. Burgess.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Saye?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Chairman Estvez?
Yes.
Resolution is memorialized.
Our second resolution is First and Nine Plaza, case number SP924, resolution regarding submission waivers. Eligible voters are Burgess, Frazee, Saye, Schneider, Tantillo, Vislaki, Dalton, and Estvez.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to move it.
Second.
Mr. Saye and Mr. Tantillo.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Frazee?
Yes.
Mr. Saye?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Chairman Estvez?
Yes.
Resolution is memorialized.
Next resolution, Blue Moon Hotel, case number SP897. A resolution granting preliminary and final site plan and Woodlands management. Eligible voters are Burgess, Frazee, Saye, Schneider, Tantillo, Vislaki, Dalton, and Estvez.
Mr. Chair, that one was removed in the revised agenda. That's being carried to the next meeting.
Is that being carried to the 7th of August?
Whatever our next meeting is. I'm still working with the applicants on that one.
There was another one adjourned. Which one was that? Because it doesn't--
Blue Moon.
No, it was Blue Moon.
Blue Moon Hotel. Four partners.
Okay. The Four Partners was adjourned as well, right? It's still on our agenda, okay. Our next resolution is Boulder Ridge Two at Howell LLC, case number SD2930 and SP914. A resolution granting preliminary and major subdivision and preliminary site plan. Eligible voters are Burgess, Saye, Schneider, Tantillo, Vislaki, Nacastro, Dalton, and Estvez.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to move it.
I'll second it.
Saye and Schneider.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Saye?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislaki?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Chairman Estvez?
Yes.
Resolution is memorialized.
Our final resolution is Verizon Wireless, case number SP920. A resolution granting preliminary and final site plan. Eligible voters are Burgess, Frazee, Saye, Schneider, Tantillo, Vislaki, Dalton, and Estvez.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to move it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Saye and a second from Mr. Frazee.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Frazee?
Yes.
Mr. Saye?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Chairman Estvez?
Yes.
Resolution is memorialized.
Before we move on to our first case, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that we had a resignation from the planning board. Mr. Morello, the Class 1 representative to the board, has resigned. The reason he resigned, he cited, was that he has work-time constraints. He has some new responsibilities at work, and he might not be able to make most of the meetings on Thursday evening. I do want to publicly thank Mr. Morello for his service to the board and his timely comments. I did wish him well, and I suggest that the fellow board members contact him and do the same. Mrs. Capitan, that being said, would you please draft a memo to Maia Di Bella, since Mr. Morello is a Class 1 designate? Maia Di Bella would have to either attend the planning board meetings or appoint a designee.
Will do.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, at the last planning board meeting, we heard testimony from Four Partners for Walgreens. At the time, Mr. Pape gave testimony to this board regarding a discussion he had with the traffic safety officer.
Mr. Chair, any discussions about that application have to be noticed. At our next hearing, meeting will be memorializing the resolution, and I'm sure--
I will withhold my comments until that time.
Thank you. Okay, our first case is review of submission waivers for the following, case number SD2937. Applicants John Blewett for a minus subdivision and lot line adjustment on Herbertsville Road.
Mr. Chair, I have the last application. We're not going to be able to go forward this evening. Could I address the board on that for two minutes?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, the last application on your agenda is the 3G application, which is the Grebo Shopping Center. We presented this application to the board in detail in April. After that meeting, we met with a subcommittee to address issues in the parking field. When we came back to continue the hearing, there were adjacent property owners who expressed concerns directly and through their counsel. We met with them, and we believe that we've addressed their concerns. In order to address their concerns, our client have to buy another piece of property, a contiguous parcel, so that he can move his detention basin and driveway away from one of the residences. When we buy that piece of property, it triggers an obligation to renotice a new list of property owners. So we're here this evening. I'm pleased to tell you that we've been working with Mr. Liston and his clients, and that I think we've reached an accord. I think I've asked Mr. Liston if he would just place on the record that we have been working with him, and that we've satisfied, that we've addressed his client's concerns, and I'm going to ask that you carry us. We'll add that property in, change our notice, and continue.
Okay.
If Mr. Liston would be so kind as to speak to the board on behalf of his client.
Yes, very briefly, Mr. Chairman Edward Liston, Tom's River, on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Tom Sheddicker, who live at 391 Ford Road, Howell, New Jersey, which is directly adjacent to this property. They are the only objectors who I represent, although there are other people who have attended the meeting at Mr. Pape's office and made their voices heard with regard to the changes. As far as Mr. and Mrs. Sheddicker are concerned, they are satisfied with the changes that have been made, which principally moved the access onto Ford Road away from their property, moved the detention basin away from their property a considerable distance, and add screening, both on the applicant's property and on the Sheddickers' property and other properties as well. Under those circumstances, if this plan is the plan that the applicant chooses to go with, and he has represented to me, Mr. Pape has represented to me that that's his intention, then we would withdraw our objection. That's asked of Mr. and Mrs. Sheddicker. There are, I think, there's at least one other person here who I do not represent, but who has been kept in the loop, so to speak, and was present at the meeting a few weeks ago at Mr. Pape's office, who may also want to be heard on his own behalf.
Is purchase of the property imminent, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we negotiated, and my separate counsel is buying, they may have closed on it.
Okay.
But that is all that I required of you this evening. I apologize. We're not able to proceed, but it is because we worked in this direction. We'll amend the plan, we'll renotice, and when--
And of course, no date, we won't be giving you a date this evening--
No.
Because--
I have to amend the application. Your staff has to review that.
You'll let us know when you're ready to proceed, but would you give me an extension of time, please, till December 31st?
On the record, so extended, and I'll follow it with a letter. Thank you.
Mrs. Clark, you have a...
I just would like to personally thank both counsel for your ability to work together in this matter. I know this has been difficult, and I think this kind of cooperation really benefits all of us, so I appreciate your time.
This is a, it's an interesting project for the town because it's taking an old shopping center and making a new shopping center out of it, and I have to congratulate Mr. Pape and his clients for going the extra mile and buying up an additional piece of property, which was also kind of derelict, and fixing that up as well. So my hat's off to...
To my clients.
To your clients.
Great.
My clients.
Okay.
I didn't suggest you were going to buy it, Ken.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, could we move on to case number SD 2937, which I already called onto the record? Please step forward.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Chris Olzak, on behalf of John and Jessica Blewett and John Blewett Inc.
Ron, do you need to...
Excuse me?
He needs to be sworn, doesn't he?
No, he's the attorney, so he doesn't need to be sworn, but I'll swear our own professionals at this time.
Do you swear affirm the testimony about to give this board the truth, the whole truth,
nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you, Mr. Olzak?
Okay, thank you. Here tonight to request waiver from certain requirements with regard to a...
Can you please speak into the mic?
Yes, I'm sorry.
We have verbatim minutes, and they need to be taped.
Okay. Is it okay if I sit down?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. Here tonight to request a waiver from certain items on a minor subdivision checklist for a boundary line agreement pursuant to New Jersey statute 4055D-51. Some of the items on the checklist, because the boundary line change is so simple, we're requesting that the waiver be based on the fact that literal enforcement of the items are impractical as far as the subdivision that we're proposing.
I'm sorry, Mr. Olzak, if I could just jump in and hold on for the chairman here. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to see if you want me to jump in and kind of walk you guys through the waivers, just to kind of expedite the process, or if you want him to continue going item by item?
I prefer that the applicant testify, and you can interject with the process as long as he testifies.
Okay.
With me tonight is Mr. Hussein, who I understand has appeared before the board a number of times. Would you require that I qualify him as an expert?
Yes, please.
Okay. You swear affirm the testimony about to give this board the truth, the whole truth, anything about the truth?
I do.
Excellent. You just state and spell your name for the record, Mr. Hussein.
Surely. My name is Sid. My name is Sid Hussein, H-U-S-A-I-N. I work with D.W. Smith Associates. I'm a professional engineer, professional planner, student of New Jersey. As far as my academic background is concerned, I've got a bachelor's degree from University of Florida, master's degree from University of Houston, postgraduate from Texas A&amp;M.
We'll accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you.
He wasn't.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I have been provided with a letter from CME Associates dated July 2nd. If you'd like, I can address the issues raised in that letter.
Yes, please.
All right.
These should just be items 7 and 8, I think, in the senior report. Those are the submission waiver requests.
Just 7 and 8?
Yeah, those address the submission waivers.
Well, with regard to the environmental impact assessment, we would ask that the board waive the requirement on the grounds that we are simply moving a boundary between the two properties. The uses would be the exact same before and after the application, if approved, and will have no impact on the environment. One thing I would like to note, the previous approvals by the zoning board of adjustment for use variances that were granted did find that those changes in use did not impact the environment, and the zoning board did waive the environmental impact assessment. As far as the surface water management plan, we would ask that that also be waived for the same reasons. However, also, the DEP does investigate the site every 30 days and provide reports as to whether or not the Blewets are in compliance with storm water management. The latest letter that my clients received was dated June 24th, I believe, and it indicated that they are in compliance, and in fact, they exceed the standards required by the state of New Jersey. Checklist item 19, that was my oversight, and we would provide that to the board if not waived. As far as item 8, I believe Mr. Hussein would address those items?
Yes, basically, item 8A, a digital copy of the plans, if that is what is required, we would provide that. We have no problem with that. We only show a key map, which is item number, item 8B on the plan. However, if there's additional information needed on it, I'd be more than happy to provide. Next one is item 8C, checklist item number 40, existing streets, roads, watercourses and water bodies within 500 feet of the property. We show, that's depicted right now on the key map, but if you need additional information, we could do that. However, based on the fact of what is being proposed under this application, all what is happening is a lot line is being shifted due to an issue that happened in the past, which is basically that there were two existing lots since 1980, I believe, and for, due to human errors, they constructed a pole bond which encroaches on the side lot line by about 4.3 feet. All we are trying to do is to realign the lot line, which currently goes east-west, just slightly off, so that we do not have that variance of basically encroachment on the lot. There are two different property owners, this husband and wife, and that's the father, who own these properties. All what we're doing under this application is just moving the lot line so that, you know, there's no encroachment on either of the lots. That's all that's being proposed.
Laura, do you take any exception with that?
No, we don't take any exception to that, and certainly, the typical caveat that's in the resolution, that if and when this information, if the planning board determines that it's necessary, the applicant's going to go home and provide that information to us. 500 feet beyond the boundary is considerable. I can tell you that it's shown within the confines of the property.
Okay, great.
Then the next item is 8D. The original boundary survey used to prepare the plan should be provided for the application. Basically, what our firm had done was prepared this outbound survey for this property, and this subdivision took place before our firm was involved with this thing. I mean, if that is what is required, we will try to go through the found map, see if we can get hold of it, and provide the township engineer or the planning board engineer with the additional information, but we'll have to research on that issue. Item 8E, location of all structures within 100 feet of the tract properties. Property lines, adjacent property lines shall be shown. And as I said, you know, what we were trying to do is keep it as a simple application, it's just a matter of moving a lot line, but if this relief is not granted, we have no choice to show it. But the fact of the matter is, all we've been doing is just moving the lot line so that there's no encroachment.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I think for the purposes of buffering, this information is valuable, and we should know whether or not there's farms adjoining the site and/or residential properties.
Okay.
Again, point well taken. I mean, I have an aerial photograph, and with your permission, just basically to depict what is there right now.
What was the date that photograph was taken?
This was basically taken off of Google Earth photograph, which is...
Yeah, but we don't know how old that is or how current it is, so I don't know if it's adequate. I mean, it's some evidence, but it's, whether it's current evidence is debatable.
I would also say that a photograph, an aerial photograph, might show a farm lane and dormant. That doesn't mean that there's not a farm next to the property, so I think that it would be wise for the board to require that.
Item 8F, a location of flood hazard areas, wooded areas, stone, tree, rows, right-of-way structures, isolated trees greater than four inches diameter, and steam corridors within 500 feet. And again, we are seeking a relief from that, as I said, we are not proposing anything new on the site. Everything stays the way it is. There's nothing new being proposed, no new building being proposed, no additional activity being proposed. Everything stays exactly the way it is, that is go. The only thing that we're doing is changing the lot line to accommodate the...
Okay, Mr. Chair, if I could just also jump in. We had had some concerns that there appears to be a stream just off the site, so we would just ask that you delineate that and any associated buffers associated with that.
Again, it is no benefit to this minor subdivision to moving the lot line, and that is why we're seeking a relief from that requirement. Item 8G, existing contours at two contour intervals within 200 feet of the tract. Once again, we're seeking same explanation as I provided earlier on, that nothing has been changed. All what we're doing is adjusting the lot line. We're seeking relief from that requirement. Item 8H, solar origin settlement control plans. No land disturbances proposed, no new land disturbance proposed under this application. Typically, solar origin settlement control plans are required when you have more than 5,000 square foot of disturbance. We are not proposing any additional disturbance under this application. All we're doing is moving the lot line. Item 8I...
Can you hold on one second? Do you have a comment or take any issue with that?
No, I don't.
Okay, great.
They don't have any disturbance proposed.
Item 8I, minimum two soil logs. Once again, we are not proposing any construction. Typically, soil logs are there to establish season and high water table. We are not doing any activity that would warrant that, and that's why we're seeking relief from that requirement.
And again, Mr. Chairman, I would concur with that.
Okay.
So if you want me to kind of summarize?
Yes, please.
I believe the applicant is requesting submission waivers from providing checklist item number 17, number 18, number 40. I think we should talk a little bit about the survey, as to whether or not the board wants it, but they are seeking the waiver of 41, 48, 50, 54, and 56. I think we had determined that the use of all structures within 100 feet should be provided. Sid, I'd recommend that when you make your next submission, the digital copy be provided in a PDF format.
Okay, not a problem.
And that's all I had.
Okay, well, let's discuss the survey. Tell me what your thoughts are on that waiver.
For the purposes of completeness, I don't know that we need it right now. We do need it, I would say, prior to a public hearing. A survey is just even required in accordance with MAP filing law, so that actually comes up later in our report as a technical comment.
So, I mean, we could waive it to deem this application complete, but they're still going to have to provide it when they come...
Correct.
Mr. Chair, the only thing I'd say about that is, if we grant the waiver and we deem them to complete, our clock starts to run without us having all the information that Lauren needs. So there's nothing fatal about that, but just be aware that, you know, the clock is running, even though they've, with them saying they'll just give it to us at some point before the hearing.
And in all likelihood, they would be required to still provide the location of structures within 100 feet, and the digital copy, and also, I think the counselor had indicated that he had the lot and block designations, so in that timeframe, they might be able to produce the survey.
Okay, so your recommendation is that we don't waive it?
I guess my question is, Mr. Olzak, how quickly before the hearing would you get that to our professionals?
I would have to research, basically. I mean, I would believe that a couple of weeks, you should be able to lay our hand on the original survey, and we would be able to produce that. It may not be sealed or signed, and I do not know who the original surveyor was, if he's alive, he's still in business. I mean, that's the issue. I mean, survey means nothing if it's not seen and sealed and signed. And what we have sealed and signed from, basically, which was surveyed, that was produced by our firm, what happened in the past, it has no relevance to this application. I mean, that's something I'm failing to understand. This survey was done for the two properties by our surveying department. It was sealed and signed survey. Why would you even care to know what happened before? Because this is what it is. It is today, that is the way it is. It's been established based on deeds, based on actual field monumentation, field verification.
Sid, if I could, and I don't want to interrupt you, I think the answer to the question might be easy. What had flagged us is, if you look at your notes, I think you guys had done the partial survey, and they're dated November 21st and June 1st. That's not the reference on the map. So if you could provide us with that information, we would be satisfied.
That's fine. That's acceptable. Partial surveys is acceptable. We could do that.
Do I have any comments for any board members on this?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just have one question. Is that all, both properties in John's name, or is the other one in his son's name?
It's in the son. Lot 11.4 is in John and Jessica Blewett. That's John Jr. The actual business is, there is a percentage of ownership of the corporation.
So seeing...
So it's two separate owners, to answer your question.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
Just one, Mr. Chair, just for sort of ease in the resolution. I think there was one waiver that you were not going to be granted. Would you just withdraw the request for that, or...
Would that be checklist item 19?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, then that way we can just approve the rest of the waiver requests.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to entertain a motion, if it's the board's pleasure.
I'll make the motion.
I didn't hear it.
Who made the motion? I didn't hear either.
I made the motion.
Mr. Tantillo?
I'll second.
Mr. Tantillo and Mr. Vislacki.
Yes.
Mr. Frazi?
Yes.
Mr. Sayer?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislacki?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Chairman Estvez?
Yes.
Waivers are granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Good night.
Our next case is an extension of time. First request for applicant and owner Dynamic Wholesale Distributors LLC, block 38, lot 5, Randolph and Lake in Farmingdale Road.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Todd Cohen. I'm the attorney for the applicant Dynamic Wholesale Distributors LLC. Preliminary and final site plan was granted to the applicant in May of '06. The property is a commercial warehouse building on 547 and Randolph Road. We're simply requesting a one-year extension of time to May of '09. We have received all outside agency approvals. The latest CME compliance review letter number three was dated April 25th of '08, and it's only two pages long, and all items on there have been addressed. The only thing my client's waiting for now is the Howell Township Municipal Utilities Department, tentative and final, I believe. I know there has been an application made, I believe a review letter has been done, although I haven't seen it. And once that's completed, then we can go to engineering for bond approval and build a building. So my client's simply requesting extension at this time.
To May, did you say?
Of '09.
Of '09.
That would be consistent with the one year from the last approval.
Okay, when was the approval?
May of '06.
Any comment?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the extension.
I'll second that. Mr. Sayer and Mr. Schneider.
Did we decide how?
One year.
One year. Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Frazi?
Yes.
Mr. Sayer?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislacki?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Chairman Estvez?
Yes.
One-year extension granted.
Thank you very much for your time.
Have a good night, Todd. Yeah, we'll take a ten-minute break. Okay, I'd like to reopen the meeting. Mr. Schneider, you have some comment?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman and board members, first, I'd like to thank you all for collecting for a magnolia tree from another one. We selected a beautiful magnolia that's quite different and should be planted in my yard on Sunday.
You're welcome.
I want to thank you all.
I expect you to invite us over so we can toast your mother and see the tree.
Yeah, sure will. We got scotch, we got the beer.
All right, I'd like to sound it out.
One more thing, I just want everybody to know that CME is following through on the final. For example, our resolution on Best Buy, before the bond is released, she sits in on the meeting, she reviewed the, each onsite, she found deficiencies. They are correcting these deficiencies. So now, when we follow through with our resolutions, we're following through to completion. That nobody's getting away with anything. If they're not following our resolution, they're going to have to, or they're not going to have bond money released.
Great, that's great news. Thank you. Thank you for those comments, Mr. Schneider. Our next case, Christ Church, I'm going to have to recuse myself because I do have a past relationship with Reverend Addison. I had the pleasure of coaching his son, Brian, and I do mean it was a pleasure, but at this point, I'm going to step down from the dais and turn it over to Vice Chairman Vislacki.
Next application is case number SP nine zero five, application of Christ Church, Reverend Brian Addison as applicant and owner, seeking amended preliminary and final site plan to operate a daycare facility within the existing church building and to construct a four-foot fence around the playground area in the ARE six zone on the premises known as block sixty-six, lot thirty-six, dot seventy-seven, Oakland Road.
Counsel?
Good evening, Vice Chairman, members of the board. My name is Bonnie Wright from the firm of Hanlon and Neiman. I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
Can you speak into the mic?
A little closer.
Yeah, we can't.
I'm a loud voice, I don't want to overwhelm you. I have two witnesses here for you this evening, both Reverend Brian Atinson, As well as Richard DeFalco, professional engineer. Got a, if you don't have any initial questions, I'm going to.
Yeah, Mr. DeFalco's been before this board, so we've accepted his credentials.
Let's just have him sworn in first, though.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, anything about the truth?
I do.
Okay. Ms. Wright will qualify you when it's time to testify in her own professionals. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing about the truth?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Go ahead, counsel, it's all yours.
Members of the board, this application for site plan approval was granted by this board on February sixth, two thousand and three. The church is fully constructed and fully operational. We're now seeking approval to operate a daycare facility at the church and for ancillary approval for the playground, which has already been constructed on the site. I'm going to ask Reverend Atinson to give us a brief description of the operation of the church as it exists today.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for hearing us this evening. My name is Reverend Brian Atinson. I am the senior pastor of Christ Church at seventy-one Oakland Road. Currently, our church has been in occupation of our current facility for the last two years. As Ms. Wright had mentioned, our approval extends back a number of years, but things being what they are, when we first moved in, it was interesting. We moved in without the request of a daycare center. Never really thought about it, to be honest with you. Thought about going in for the church. Pretty soon after we moved in, we got a lot of phone calls from people in the town wondering if the church had a daycare center, because they were looking for affordable and safe daycare. And it never dawned on us to have a daycare center, or else we would have presented it during our initial approval. After receiving numerous phone calls, we talked amongst ourselves and the leadership, and we thought, why not be a benefit to the community and open up a daycare center? So we began to do all the paperwork. We called the town and asked them what would be the proper procedure. They put the brakes on us. We hadn't started anything. They said, your initial approval did not consist of a daycare center. You cannot operate that without having proper approval. And so we put the brakes on everything and started the process. And here we are today in hopes of gaining approval to start a daycare center for children from infant all the way up to pre-K. And also, we've received numerous phone calls as well about an after-school program. Unbeknownst to us, Newberry School, which is around the corner from us, almost literally, does not have any recommended after-school programs where they can take the kids. And so, in contacting the Board of Education, they said that we would love to have a facility that parents could approve to have their children dropped off via school bus after school, so that way they're not home by themselves. And we thought, well, wouldn't this be a great service to the community by opening up our facility? It would require no additional construction, other than the fence around the playground. And also, we're asking if we could move the sign closer to the street and just turn it, and it would be the same type of sign, and Mr. DeFalco will talk about that. And we would have, you know, qualified, trained professionals caring for kids every day. It's our intention to have it licensed by the state of New Jersey. They have come out and given us a courtesy inspection, and they've gone through the facility, and they were delighted. It has fire sprinklers, it's updated, it's modern, it's a nice environment. We constructed our Sunday school area for young kids. And then, when they came in, they said, this is already designed and ready for it. And so, they also put the brakes on us and said, until the town says that you can do it, they can't go any further with us beyond the courtesy inspection. And so, everything really hinges upon our discussion today, and I would just ask for a favorable response.
Reverend, is this going to be religious or non-sectarian?
Well, sir, I have our mission statement. If you'd like, I can read it to you. It will be both. Our goal is to be a benefit to the community regardless of any religious affiliation. However, we'd like to be able to teach the young people character, ethics, and support good family traditions without indoctrinating them into any specific religious paradigm. So that would be my response.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo.
Reverend, I like, I, I'm very familiar with your place, and it's kept up real nice. So the only thing that bothers me, is this playground going to be on that, on, can't think of the name of the road. Oakland Road.
Well, sir, the playground is already in place. On the drawings, it's shown, and we actually intend to put security planters in front of that area, so no traffic would by chance make its way. Yeah, you know, we want to make sure that we protect the kids. My kids, you know, go to that playground as well, so we want to make sure that it has the proper safety mechanisms.
The second thing is, I see you got, going to put a, construct a four-foot fence. I don't believe a four-foot fence is really adequate for a playground, especially toddlers. Two seconds, somebody could grab one and take it over that fence and gone.
You know, it's an interesting comment that you have, sir. I actually contacted our insurance company about this, and I thought the higher the fence, the better. And our insurance company actually said a four-foot fence is not only adequate from the state's perspective, but also from an insurance one, because they said if it make it complicated or too complex, kids are still want to jump it, and they'll wind up getting more hurt by jumping a six-foot fence with pickets on the top of it than they would if it was just a flat top. And of course, the safety for the children is our number one priority.
Yeah, but I think with today. Mr. Tantillo was saying, somebody could reach over a four-foot fence and grab a child if somebody turned their back. I think that's his concern.
Sure.
It takes, you know, the state can say this and say that, but when a, when a child is kidnapped and gone, or killed off a bit, they don't want to hear nothing afterwards.
Oh, yes, sir, I understand.
And I am very concerned about the children, and that's, that's a, that would be a pet peeve with me, four-foot fence, because four-foot fences.
Sure. Personally, I have no issue raising it. I would just want to make sure that we were in conformity with the state regulations, and also, without opening ourselves up to greater liability and risk towards people getting injured. And so, I mean, I don't have a problem putting a twenty-foot fence up, provided it would be.
You're going to have slides and all that stuff?
Yes, sir.
See, that's another thing. It's way higher than a fence.
Excuse me, Mr. Tantillo, the actual playground is already existing.
I'm sorry?
The actual playground is already existing. There is a photograph.
Oh, she's, she's got it right, yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Usually, we hear testimony from the professionals before we start asking questions, but they're, they're already going into this playground. So I'm just wondering, I read the minutes from the two thousand and three. Was the playground ever approved? Was it ever in the approval of the original?
Actually, it was not included in the original resolution of approval.
So technically, this is an illegal playground that's built right now, correct?
I, I'm not, my client, from what I'm told, did actually inquire about whether or not there were any permits necessary for the construction of the playground. He was advised, no. But it was not included in the resolution of approval for the original site plan.
I'm sorry, was that, I just want to make sure I didn't mishear you. I don't believe there was any representation with regard to a playground at the previous planning board approval.
No.
I'm certainly not in a position to dispute that fact with you.
And what you're saying is he inquired about the necessity of a permit after the fact?
Yes, after the certificate of occupancy was issued, that the church was operational. He was actually gifted the playground at that point. He inquired whether or not any permit, anything was necessary. He was advised, no, and not realizing the logistics of having obtained.
Who gave him that advice, counselor?
Reverend Atinson, do you recall who you spoke with at that time?
It was not someone from the town, sir. It was actually the installer who told me that permits are not necessary. Now, whether that was correct or not, that was my responsibility, and I bear that responsibility. We are here, and I would hope that if correction needs to be made, we'll do whatever it takes. He told me that it was not required. I believe them.
Mr. Chair. I just want to, what do you feel on it?
I mean, clearly, they don't contest the fact that it wasn't part of the initial approval. Whether they required permits for it or not, I'm not sure. That's up to the, to the zoning department. The fact is, they're here, and they're, they're showing it to you, and they're, they're asking for its approval as part of this application. So I don't find that there's anything improper.
Mr. Chair, also, if I could jump in, and I know typically, this isn't the form for it, but, Mr. DeFalco, is this daycare facility going to be licensed by the state?
Yeah. It's my understanding that the Reverend will be getting it licensed, yes.
Okay, and just so the board members understand, when you get a license from the state to operate a daycare facility, it's my understanding that they then review and approve your playground area and the associated fencing, so it actually fall under their jurisdiction of approval. Just so you're, you know, this would then have to be reviewed by the state.
Board members, I just want to get back to one point. I would like to hear the testimony before we start questioning the applicant, so if we can get into your testimony, and I'm sorry, we got a little off track, but I know there's some concerns that bothered people, so.
Thank you. Reverend Atinson, I think you addressed this, but I'm just going to ask, the children that will be permitted to attend the daycare facility will not be limited to children that are children of the congregation of the church. Is that correct? It will be open to the community?
That is correct. It will be open to the entire community regardless of race, creed, religious affiliation.
And as far as the church functions that go on now, will there be any overlap between the daycare operation and the church functions?
No. The daycare is intended to operate from seven AM to six PM at night. Currently, our services are on Sunday mornings and also on Wednesday night at seven-thirty. We do occasionally have weekend services, but they're at night on Friday night. Time to time, I meet with my staff on a Saturday morning, but the daycare will not be open on the weekends or overlap on any of the current church activities.
Do you find, as the church operates today, that you have, I believe, a hundred and thirty-two parking spaces, do you find that there's ever any overlap either during church services or holidays?
No. You know, we, you know, there are some holidays that are more well-attended than others, Christmas and Easter, people go to church. But generally, we have, we have ample enough parking, a hundred and thirty-two, did you say, parking spaces? The children are, we'll intend for the children to be dropped off properly at the church, checked in by their parents with a staff member, logged in to the, to the database, and then upon the end of the day, the parent would come and pick up their child and be released to the custody of their parent. And so, we don't think that parking will be an issue.
Reverend Atinson, who will be responsible for the actual operation and oversight of the daycare?
Well, we have two people. Number one, my wife, Reverend Antoinette Atinson, who's sitting right here. She is our, my executive pastor, and she deals with the entire administration of the organization. And then also, we have a director already in place. Her name is Glennis Nguyen. She has a master's degree in, I believe it's early childhood development, and she will be the one that will be operating the daycare every day with my wife's oversight.
And I think the board professional touched on this briefly, but this is going to be licensed by the state, yes?
We intend for it to be. We've already had the state come out, give us a courtesy review, a couple of minor things, no construction, things like move a TV off of, you know, a counter or a table, put it up on the wall, things like this. But no construction would be necessary within the facility.
Okay, but until you actually receive approval from the municipality, you can't actually apply for the state license?
That is correct. They have stopped us until we do get approval from, from the town.
Okay. How many rooms of the church facility do you anticipate using for the daycare facility?
I believe, I believe Mr. DeFalco shows a total of five rooms, but I'm, I'm not a hundred percent, I don't have the drawing in front of me, I apologize. It would actually be a total of five rooms plus the use of the kitchen. Currently, the kitchen has no oven or stove in it, just a microwave, and so, it'll continue to remain that way. And so, but we wanted to be able to show it. We'd be storing the kids' packed lunch. Parents will be sending lunch with their children. We will not be cooking any of the food while we're there. And we, like I said, we don't even have a stove there, so we'll intend to keep it that way.
What about for special needs, child to have dietary or, or medical type of needs? How do you plan to address those?
Well, our hope is to work in cooperation with the parent, because the parent is going to know exactly what the child needs. We are not, at this time, interested in setting up a working kitchen. It's very costly, and we just are not interested in doing that, and so, this daycare may not be the right daycare for them. This may just be another option that they have.
Has the state given you any indication that they may require you to do additional construction?
No, sir. I have a report from the state showing about five or six items that were in question, all relatively simple items, like move a changing, a diaper-changing station from one side of the room to the other, so it's in a certain distance from the sink. So that way, the work can wash their hands. And I'd be happy to show that to the board.
Question, how many students or how many children do you anticipate will be involved? And what will be your maximum, do you think, capacity, if you know?
It's a great question. It will really be determined by the state. They have very strict guidelines in terms of square footage, and also, teacher-to-student ratios. I have here, for instance, with infants, and we don't know how many infants would sign up. But for an infant, it's one teacher for every four infants is the state requirement. And so, we intend to comply with all the state regulations, their determination in terms of the square footage that we have available, and to make sure that we're staffed properly, so that way we could provide the best quality care.
Okay. So you couldn't, with, give me kind of a rough estimate. I guess I'm, I, the reason I ask is I'm concerned, or just want to make sure in terms of the parking, I know having a two- and three-year-old, I haven't had the benefit of being in daycare, maybe I will be looking at yours, but I know in looking for different opportunities for my children, having some problems with some parking in some locations, and I just was wondering in terms of a rough estimate, if you knew. And maybe that's an inappropriate question, but I just was hoping to. Not at all, Ms. Quack. We actually, based upon the informal inspection conducted by the state, the amount of children that they have indicated could be in the daycare facility. Now, again, that does not apply to any after-school program that may be operated. Okay. And in addition, it does not include the fact that since this operate, this informal inspection, they have been considering the possibility of utilizing more rooms in the church. But based upon the number of rooms that they were estimating at that time, the state anticipate, the maximum amount of children they could have is thirty-six. Okay. So even with the additional rooms, we're looking perhaps fifty, fifty-five? So the amount, again, I want to make clear that that does not include the after-school children, because it's, the ratios are different. But, so the amount of parking that's available far exceeds the amount of children that will be attending the school. So you anticipate in the daycare, up to possibly fifty, and then with the after-school, do you know what the capacity would be?
That would wind up being something that we would work out with the Board of Education, simply by notifying them that we would be available, talking with them, finding out what the need was, and seeing if we could accommodate that. And so, at this point, I do know that Newberry, from my understanding and what my staff has told me, does not have a single location for after-school program. We would be the only one in their district.
I guess, given, I think it's an unbelievable benefit certainly to the community, but given the, the need, I just was wanting to make sure that the parking was not going to be an issue, and the safety, obviously, of the children.
Sure.
As well as, given if there's such a need for it, making sure that the younger children, as well the older children, if they're being picked up at the same time. I know pickups tend to be a little crazy, as well as the opportunity to have a place
I know pickups tend to be a little crazy, as well as the opportunity to have a place to pick them up if there was something that you were going to suggest to the board on that.
Actually, we were going to get to that exactly, how what there is... Their intention is as to how children are to be dropped off and picked up and that type of thing. So, do you have a particular process you have in mind that you intend to see implemented?
Well, we have. If you have a copy of the drawing, we have parking spaces around three sides of the building that actually come up to the building. We would ask the parents to park in those spaces, walk their children through the front entrance, to be checked in by a staff member, then at the end of the day, do the same thing. So, we do have 132 parking spaces. And so, if we thought about 50 children, and let's just say each parent had one child, there would only be 50 cars coming in through a staggered period, because everybody gets off of work differently and they commute different times. Some people arrive home at 4:00, others at 5:30. And so, it would be staggered as well as dropping off as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, having had my children go through Rainbow World and then also use what they call the public school aftercare, which had the YMCA, which was providing those services, it's come... Been brought to my attention that as of this coming year, that the YMCA is no longer going to be located in the... In our middle schools and elementary schools, providing after-daycare service. So, and if that is, in fact, the case, there's going to be a great demand and need for some after-daycare services. However, how do you get the children, because the parents are still at work, how do you get them from the school to your facility?
If I could, we've done some investigation, and my understanding is that the Board of Education will transport the children directly to our facility via bus. And then, we will escort them into the building, check them in, and then their parents will come and physically pick them up at the time that's determined. And so, from my understanding, it's a service that is provided by the Board of Education, though my children do not participate in it at this time. They're a bit young for that, but...
I know the school board buses from Ardina School to a couple of... To a couple of different daycares in the area, including St. Catherine's.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I will, in regards to the playground equipment in relationship to where the church is with the parking all the way around, where is that exactly located? Is that behind the building or...
Do you want to figure that out? It's the...
Do we have to cord this mic, Barbara?
Yes.
Just say one, two, that's professionals do.
Have a batter.
If you could speak loud enough, I don't know if they'll be able to pick it up. It's got to be picked up on the record.
Okay. I don't have a problem.
You want us to wait?
This is dead.
All right. Wait a second. It's just that it has to be on the record, so need to make sure we have an accurate record.
Certainly.
See, it's on. Is it on, Barbara? Was it on? It's on.
There we go. Beautiful.
Says on and off.
To answer your question, the playground is located at the southeast corner of the existing building. Oakland Road is to the west of the building, and the playground existing is to the southeast corner, adjacent to the parking lot. Right. On the bottom of the drawing, there is a picture of a concrete planter, which weighs 870 pounds each. That's before it's filled with dirt. The intention is to place, I think, five or six of them across the front face of the playground, close enough that a vehicle will not be able to drive between them, so that if there's any errant vehicles or a car that's, for some reason, not paying attention and just wants to keep going straight, it would hit these concrete obstructions and stop the vehicle. Those are used in front of public buildings, post offices, schools, and it's been put in. So, it's not just a fence. We have that, and behind it is a fence. But there's going to be five, I think there's five of them, right across the front of the parking lot.
Are they meant to deter bicycles and motorcycles as well, or...
No, not motorcycles or bicycles, but just cars, trucks.
But the front of the playground will be fenced, correct?
Yes. All four sides will be fenced.
Okay. Now, my only... My question is, how are the children transported from the building to the playground? And what kind of safety precautions are you putting in place in that regard?
Right. So, the plan is to exit the door on the southwest corner of the building, where there is a concrete sidewalk, and each teacher would have a group of students with them, and the aide would be there as well. And they would walk down the sidewalk. There is, on your plan, there is a detail for like an accordion gate, which will be stretched across the parking lot at the time when children cross from the sidewalk to the playground. So, that'll be stretched across. There'll be one of the aides with like a little stop sign standing there. If anybody's coming, they'll say, "Wait two minutes until the kids cross," and then they'll open the gates again once the kids are inside the fence to allow traffic to circulate. Most of the time, there's no visitors to the building. Once the playground is in use, everybody who is there already is assigned a certain classroom, and the parents have already dropped off the students. So, it's a morning drop-off and an afternoon pickup. And in between those two drop-off and pickup times is the time for play. And it's not expected to be a lot of traffic around the parking lot during the middle of the day at any time. But if there is traffic, the gates are going to be up, and they'll be watching as well. And it's small groups of children, maybe six or seven at a time. It's not like all 36 will be on the playground, because there's different age groups.
Reverend, the state requires, when these children take naps, they have to have cots and certain things that there's these furnishings will be all included by the state regulations?
If I can consult with my professional. Yes, sir. Yes.
Now, I feel better. That's what my wife does.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
For our engineer and Mr. DeFalco, you know, I have a concern. My concern is Oakland Road.
Let's put on our paternal hat here, and let's say that this is a very active, affluent facility. It's being utilized early in the morning when people are going to work. Oakland Road is traveled pretty much at 40, 45 miles an hour, coming up to the hump and coming over, as you know, where Wendler meets. There's a lot of speed going on there. Yeah. So, I'm thinking, if we have a lot of traffic and cars are pulling up, they're going to be slowing down and, you know, potentially, you know, I'd like to see some sort of mitigation where maybe we could strike the street, slow down, do something if we're going to have a lot of ingress, egress early in the morning when people are going to and from work at the high-traffic-demand area, times of the day, so to speak. Can you address some of that?
The number of students anticipated during the morning drop-off time, I think the Reverend said maybe maximum of 50. The times that they would be dropped off will probably vary for more than an hour, which is about a vehicle per minute. I don't think there's going to be everybody arriving at the 8 o'clock bell, because there is no bell here. So, I don't think there's going to be a concentration of traffic. There will be an increase, obviously, to the site in the morning, where normally, there's no traffic in the morning, but it's going to be spread out over an hour's time. I don't think it's going to be significant or cause any danger. The roadway is properly designed. It's a very wide 30-foot driveway, straight alignment. There's plenty of sight distance both ways, so it's a safe intersection, and I think it's not an issue.
Mr. Chair? Just on that, during the initial hearing, the applicant had testified that the traffic counts were all taken during the time that church would be in session. They also projected a 2.5% increase in traffic going forward in time. So, there's never really an analysis of queuing or traffic during these hours. So, I guess my question is, did you look at this particular road during these hours? And also, just by way of model, you know, you know how other facilities, you know, in the area have operated to know what their traffic is during this, you know, the drop-off and pickup periods?
Not as far as modeling specifically this site, only that the fact that the time is the real factor here, that the time of drop-offs dictates the amount of traffic.
So, no traffic study was done for this particular...
Not for this low volume of traffic, no.
No. If I may, we did have a traffic engineer study of the site for our initial application.
Yeah, but that's for your initial use. This is a different use, which is quite different from a church that meets, you know, twice or three times a week. This is going to be a daily occurrence, five days a week, at certain number of hours, so...
And just also, to go back to what those original... Originally, there was a Phase Two that was going to be part of this project that was going to involve a school of some sort. And after hearing public testimony and concerns, Phase Two, at least for the time being, was put off. And the traffic testimony, I believe, didn't take that into account and just spoke directly to the church operations that were going to remain. So, it was something that was looked at on the weekends, I guess, not during the week, during the, you know, the one-hour times you're talking about.
That's correct. Phase Two was a much grander scheme. It was a full school, and this is a 50-student daycare. And the rule of thumb, and I think the board engineer can verify this, the rule of thumb is that if you have less than 100 trips, it doesn't warrant a study. And we have 50 over an hour, and that's really not up to the code to require such a study.
Ask our board engineer.
I would concur that typically, when you start to look at when you need a traffic impact analysis, it's when you generate more than 100 trips at the peak... I think during the peak hour of traffic. I would also agree with Mr. DeFalco's testimony that when you're dealing with a daycare, your distribution of traffic is a little bit different. If you think about more of a preschool, everybody drops off their kids at 9:00 and everybody picks up at 11:00 or 12:00. When you have a daycare, people don't have to get their kids there at 9:00. Some people come at 8:00, some people come at 9:00, some people come at 10:00. So, typically, it's very hard to look at the distribution.
Okay.
I would also concur that at the time, previously when this was looked at, we did not consider peak weekday traffic. It was specific to the church use. But I don't know that this specific plan, a school with 50 students warrants a traffic analysis.
My follow-up question to that, Mr. Chair, is then it will be a school for 50 students. It's not going to become a school at a level that would warrant a traffic study.
May I address that? Again, this is licensed by the state. It could not get to that level. They're very set as to the, again, the number of children, given the size of the rooms, the dimensions of the space to be utilized, the ratios of children to staff. So, it could not grow to a school of 150 children.
What could it grow to?
Again, based upon the space that's available, the space that we're proposing using, our estimate is between perhaps 50 to 55 children for the daycare facility. And the reason we can't give you a more exact number is a because we're prevented from applying for the state license at this time, but also because when the state came out, the number of rooms we were anticipating using at that time was three less. So, at the time they came out, based upon the three less rooms, it was 36 children. So, we're guessing to be, the number to be 50 to 55 children. And again, that doesn't include the children that may utilize the after-school program.
And that would be my question to you is, how many students can come to the after-school care? Because typically, a daycare facility may take 25, 30, it may take on that many children for aftercare, and that would then pose a concern at the PM, peak time.
Right.
If I may?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to go on the record to say that this is a daycare, and we do not have any intention of turning this into a school.
Okay.
Yeah, but what she's saying is it's going to mushroom, it has to mushroom a little bit.
Well, we do have, we do have space that the state is very excited about the possibility of us doing this, but there are a lot of even constraints that we have internally in terms of staffing, the load that it puts upon the building. I'm not looking, and I don't think we really have any intention to have, to have 100, you know, children at the facility. Our goal, our goal is to provide a daycare facility and then to open up perhaps one or two rooms after school for after-school care.
Right. So, the after-school care is separate from the daycare? Am I correct in that assumption?
I... Yeah, I guess. Simply because the daycare will have its own curriculum? The after-school care will be more of a homework club?
All right. So, but will the aft... The aftercare from the school, the Board of Ed, is that going to have to be licensed by the state, and the number's going to be restricted by the state on that as well?
Chairman, it's my understanding that that program as well is subject to state oversight.
So, the number 50 is going to be the max for both daycare and aftercare, right?
No, it's not. That 50 to 55 maximum will be the daycare.
Okay. So, then, what is the maximum for the aftercare?
Chairman, members of the board, I do want to apologize, because only recently did I throw out to Reverend Atkinson that we should be considering whether or not you're going to run an after-school program.
After-school.
Because I didn't want to find ourselves in the position where we, again, had to come back to the board. So, I apologize that we are not as well-versed on this subject matter as we should be, perhaps. But it is my understanding that that too is subject to state oversight. So, again, the number of children, the number of staff necessary for the children will be subject to their input.
Well, my question is, because right now, with the daycare at 50 and the aftercare from the school could warrant more than 100 trips, thus warranting a traffic study, if that's the case. I don't know. Like you said, we know the daycare can only max to 50, but the after-school care, what's the maximum number? Is that 50 as well? I'm confused here.
Mr. Chair, I think they actually said 55 was the...
Again, I'm estimating 50 to 55. Again, based on their intention to use perhaps two rooms for the after-school program, the likelihood that the state's going to authorize an additional 50 children in those two rooms is...
Okay. So, I understand it. So, you're saying that then it could rise to maybe 60 or 70 then? Because you're saying, say you have your maximum daycare of 55, and then you have another 10 to 20 for after-school that you're going to put in these additional rooms, you're looking at 70 and 70 trips. I just want to make sure that we're not going to get over 100. It's my confusion here, because I'm hearing daycare and then I'm hearing after-school care, and they're two separate entities. And I just want to make sure that, you know, the traffic concerns that were raised are addressed properly.
Right. The trips, the threshold, 100 trips per peak hour, not per day.
Okay.
So, again, if we spread the distribution over several hours...
Well, I mean, peak hour could be in the evening time at rush hour, when all these parents are going to pick up. I think our planner had...
I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Because I've been hearing that there's going to be five rooms used for the daycare. Now, it's kind of three rooms used for the daycare. So, if you could kind of explain to me a little bit on how this is going to work, because, you know, having two kids at daycare and having 50 kids in three rooms, ranging from an infant to pre-k, is disconcerting. You know, I mean, typically, the student-to-teacher ratio changes based on age, you know, infant to about 18 months, 18 months to two and a half, over two and a half. And, you know, just a little information for the board with respect to the state's requirements in terms of staffing for aftercare, because I could conceivably see, you know, I mean, a teacher stands in a classroom and teaches 25 kids. So, I don't think, you know, with all due respect, that it's inconceivable to put 25 kids in a room with one person, because that's where they are all day long. And I would also agree with the chairman in that while, yes, on the AM, on the drop-off, I would say that the drop-off is spread out way more than the pickup. You know, pickup is, most people get out of work 5:00, 5:30, they travel however long to get to the facility, and so, the number of trips associated with pickup... to get to the facility, and so the number of trips associated with pickup, which I would say is probably in and around 5:30 to 6:30, would be more heavily trafficked, plus you have like 50 more kids there, those parents are picking them up. So I don't think that it's inconceivable that you might run into a situation at that point in time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Schneider.
As I see this application, I see the application is to operate a daycare facility, and I'm very comfortable with that. I am not comfortable with this program of bussing in children for after-hours school. I don't know how many, how many buses, how many kids, how many rooms. I'm very uncomfortable with that part of it. As far as I'm concerned, I'm ready to vote for this daycare facility with their fencing and such, but I certainly am not comfortable with this other part of the?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. How is this noticed? Is this noticed as a daycare? And if after-school care is part of this application, is there a deficiency in the notice? Before we get there, I just want to address some of the concerns that Mr. Schneider had. There are several cases that the Supreme Court and our appellate division have issued regarding houses of worship and what's permitted and what's a part of a house of worship. And they're all very, they're all the same. The house of worship is the principal use. And what the courts have identified as the ministry, what other services are provided in our parlance, it's accessory uses. The after-school program would be a permitted accessory use, customary and incidental. The daycare would be a permitted accessory use. If they put a library in, you know, if they put in a sanctuary area, even a gym, like a all-purpose room that serves the community, these things have all been identified by our courts as permitted accessory uses for houses of worship. The line of questioning is not aimed at denial or permitting. It's aimed at understanding what's going on on the site so that the board can ensure that the proper planning, and if necessary, improvements, site distances, you know, things like that are made part of the resolution for, you know, for organs' compliance and for the health and safety of the community.
Exactly.
We would like, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
We would like to call Mrs. Atkinson. I think that she can address some of the issues that we've been discussing. We keep looking to her for insight, so let's just get her up here.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you please state and spell your name for us?
Antoinette Atkinson, spelling of the first name, A-N-T-O-I-N-E-T-T-E, last name, A-T-T-I-N-S-O-N.
Antoinette, you heard the comments of Ms. Bean, the board's professional planner. Can you address some of those comments, specifically referring to the number of rooms, the number of children, how many children, whether or not that's overseen by the state?
When the state came in to give us a preliminary inspection, initially, we had them to look at three rooms, because we wanted to be creative by having a room where we could have arts and crafts, science projects. And we saw, although they reviewed the three rooms, it was, they gave us the capacity of those three rooms, we didn't want to limit ourselves to just those three rooms. We wanted to have activities with the kids, that we could take them from room to room doing different things, and to be creative with that. And so that's where some of the confusion come in. So they gave us the capacity of 36, with the three rooms, also with toilets and things of that sort. When they come back, the state is very strict. I've run a daycare before. They're very strict. They're stricter than you guys, a lot tougher. As far as after-school, for five years and older, they only allow 1 to 16. In the public school, you can go up to 25 and sometimes more than that, but they only allow for 16. And we wouldn't even have the capacity, to be honest and conscientious, we couldn't do that to children. I have children. You wouldn't be able to fit them in there. You just wouldn't. And parents wouldn't even allow it, to be perfectly honest. But the state would come in, they would designate how many you could have, based upon the square footage of each room.
And Antoinette, that applies to the after-school program as well?
Absolutely. It's across the board. After-school, I know we're trying to delineate between daycare and after-school. It's just providing a service for parents that can't get to their kids. And so even they would be in a separate room from the younger children. And so we wanted to provide that. But we only have limited space for that. And so we still would have to be conscious of, you know, the amount of space, and the state would as well, put a mandate on how many we could allow in each room.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask, I think it's a wonderful, again, opportunity for the community. I'm just, what I'm wondering is, I know they have a lot of grandparents' day, a lot of the schools that I've looked at have had shows that the kids put on, and you are in a situation, which is a great thing, you get the parents, both parents there, you get the grandparents there, to all come. And what I'm just focusing on is purely the parking. Do you anticipate with the daycare, as well as the after-school, being a situation where you'd have the families coming to engage in activities during the day?
Well, one of the things that we've done in time past, and this is another daycare, but that we would be conscientious as well here, is that sometimes you have to stagger things so that you don't have confusion. And so you have multiple programs, though they're the same, you know, perhaps, say, we're putting on a graduation, and the infants are going to another. And so you would have a specific day for that event. You wouldn't schedule everybody for the same event. And with the infants in that classroom, you have a limited amount of children, so it's not everyone. It's not including after-school care kids, it's not including, you know what I mean? So you specify.
And I just, in terms of the, I don't know, anyone can address this, in terms of the ability above and beyond the parking space that you have, do you have any other areas, if it's not, if it's full to capacity, if you have the graduation or a big event, there could be any parking? Answer's probably not, is it?
There's sufficient parking for anything that this daycare can throw at, really. There's not enough people to be worried about parking. 132 spaces, it'd be hard for us to fill a third of this lot during a big event.
Okay, but if you had 50, I guess I'm just looking, if you had 50 students, and both the parents coming from their workplace, plus you had another relative, I mean, I just, that's what I'm?
But as the reverend said, you wouldn't have the 50 students. There'd be, maybe the 10 students would be graduating, or the 12, two-year-olds would be. So there'd be a limited engagement. So there might be 24 cars, not?
What is the time that the daycare operates? The time, basically?
7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday.
7 to 6. And what time would this after-school buses come in?
Normally, school lets out at about 2:30, and so whenever the bus arrives?
So by 3 o'clock? So in the middle of this daycare, you have all these other children coming in?
They would come in, however, they would not enter into the same space as those children. That's what we're saying. We have rooms allocated for after-school care, so that they don't mix and mingle with the younger children.
How many? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
How many students are enrolled at the Newberry School? Does anyone know?
Sure, quite a bit, though.
Well, I'm fairly certain that the Newberry School is one of the lower enrollment schools in the township. No, no one knows.
It'd be good if we could compare.
It would be, just to see what the potential, I mean, obviously, it would be first-come, first-served, as far as who gets signed up and enrolled first, gets to go to the after-school program, and then there would be a waiting list, I assume.
But the potential would still be based on the square footage of the school?
Of the sides of the school, right.
As far as what they were allocated.
Mr. Chairman, if I will, I think, you know, from their testimony, there is limited amount of space. There is a limit to the number of students that will be there at one time. There is a limit to the number of after-school kids that will be there. The after-school kids will not intermingle with the daycare kids. They'll be brought in separately. And realistically, I think even with daycare, you're going to stagger those hours, probably from somewhere between 3 and 6 o'clock. I agree, your main thrust may be between 5 and 6 o'clock, but I think in an average daycare, there are some kids that will leave at 12 o'clock, some kids that will leave at 3 o'clock. So, I mean, you're going to have a limited number of kids leaving in the school, number one, probably less than 100 at any point in time. And you're not going to have 100 parents there at 6 o'clock to pick up their kids.
If I may, and this may or may not help you at all, but my child does go to daycare. And I kid you not, maybe once every two weeks, do I actually land in the parking lot with any other car? And the daycare does probably have, I'd say, 35 to 40 children. And I drop my child off at normal prime-time hours, I pick her up at prime-time hours, I am never in that parking lot with any other car. So, again, with the daycare facility, not only are they coming and going at different times, some of them, many of them are stay-at-home mothers, they're dropping them off for two or three days a week, for several hours, it's entirely different times, days. There, you know, at any given day, the amount of children in my child's class changes. So there is a lot of staggering, just to follow up on what Mr.?
Just to advise, Mr. Chair, I mean, we can certainly take council's representation, but this is not?
Absolutely. It's not testimony. I'm just letting you know.
This is not testimony. I mean, I can tell you, as an uncle, I have shown up for the holding hands to Broadway for two straight years and haven't found a parking spot at all.
I understand, I understand her point, but yeah.
If I may.
With a grain of salt, yeah.
I don't think Mr. Neiman could have given us that anecdote.
If I may, our primary reason is for the daycare. This is why we're here. The after-school care was really just kind of like, it's a benefit to the community. I'm not, you know, I'm not committed to it. If you all would feel comfortable with us putting a cap on how many students we would be willing to take in for an after-school care, I'd, you know, be willing to discuss that with you. But our goal is the daycare at this point. That's why we're here. The after-school care is really a benefit to the community. The daycare is as well. I mean, I was driving up nine, I saw one of the daycares closing. I know a lot of the funding is drying up for those that are less fortunate and can't afford daycare. One of the advantages that we have is that the building's paid for, means low overhead, that means that we can invest in good teachers and reduce the price down for the parents putting their kids into the daycare, because we don't have a huge overhead. It's a great opportunity for the town, and I'd be willing to put some numbers in the record if that would?
I don't think the numbers are concerned, because I think you're going to be restricted more so by the state than by us, so.
You're absolutely right.
And if it's good for the state, who are we to apply stricter restrictions than the state? The state has the final jurisdiction. I just want you to know, Reverend, I'm most in agreement with what you said. I think the emphasis should be on the daycare facility. That's what you want to do. I'm still not too comfortable with this other program, but I am confident that you're going to make sure that if you do reach into this other program, that it's going to be safe, and it's going to be handled in a proper, professional manner.
Thank you, sir. It is our goal to be a benefit to the community.
And if I could, Chairman, I agree that, I don't think there should be any type of number or cap, and I certainly don't think that the board was trying to suggest. Merely, within our constraints, the issue of parking and the issue of traffic is something that we need to address. You've answered them sufficiently. Certainly, I think you provided a lot of information to us, and we appreciate it. I think both programs certainly would be a benefit to the community, and you provided a very good explanation to those. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just to go on?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark's statements. I just want to say, first of all, this was approved back in 2003. None of us sat on this board.
I did. I was here when it was approved.
Well, you weren't on the roll call.
Well, I was here, I heard testimony on it.
But anyway, with that being said, there was a lot of testimony given in 2002, and we all received the minutes. I read the minutes. And I'm not saying that this is a bad thing, but there was a lot of concerns back then. And as being honest, I want to make sure that the people who made those concerns back then, their concerns probably would be addressed today. The notice that went out back then was a lot more than now, so there's not going to be a lot of people coming out that were probably in protest of it back then. So there are some concerns that I have. Back then, traffic concerns were great. A lot of people came out and talked about the traffic impact. The study was done in 2005, we're now in 2008. The roads have changed, the area's developed. So I don't know how comfortable I am with saying that maybe another traffic study doesn't need to be done. The area has changed in the three years. So I don't think we heard enough testimony, or I didn't hear enough testimony, really addressing the traffic, especially that it was addressed then. There was also, and quite honestly, Pastor, this thought was in your head back then, because you were going to do it in the face, too. It just didn't pop up. But because there was so much concern, I think you decided to scale it down so it would get passed and then come back later, which is fine. But there were a lot of concerns. There was a comment made whether there's going to be cooking done on the premises, kitchen, a lot of things we didn't address. And I'm still not even sure, is any kid using the playground now? Does anybody use that playground now?
Children from the church use the playground through the Sunday School program that we have. That playground has been installed by, you know, licensed installers to all specifications.
Were inspections done on it?
I don't know who would inspect it.
Yes, sir. It was Reverend Atkinson's belief that there was no permit necessary.
But there was no permit necessary, right?
We still, actually, Mr. Kachere, do you know the answer to that? Because I don't.
I don't know that.
I am not sure the permit was necessary or not necessary.
I mean, that's within our Buildings Department. I don't know if they considered a structure that needs to be?
My point for bringing that up is that because he didn't apply for a permit, there would have been no inspection.
Well, I could tell you in this town, you put a nail in the wall, they won't inspect it. I cannot believe that an inspection wouldn't be needed for a playground that kids are going to use, safety. So I'm not convinced that an inspection isn't needed. And we didn't even get testimony, whether there's signs, what's the weight requirements for the kids that are using this. There's so much that needs to be addressed with this playground. I don't know, Jen, if you could give us anything, because we never even heard any testimony with this playground. You know, weight requirements for the kids, should there be signage in the park saying, you know, how many kids should be in there, what weight should be used in this equipment?
Well, I don't know the specifics of the manufacturer, et cetera. I would concur that I would assume, I don't know for a fact, that permits would be required, and they would have to inspect, like, the foundations or the footings that these facilities go on, because kids are going to be climbing on them. As far as, you know, weight limits, et cetera, I guess that would come with the manufacturer's specs. I don't have them, so I can't speak to that. I would say that, in my experience, daycare facilities don't have, it's not like a park that has unrestricted access to these facilities. They're usually coming out one or two classes at a time, based on their age group, and they separate them, you know, the older kids from the little kids. So I would venture to guess that, you know, looking at the exhibit, it's a pretty significant facility that, you know, 10 or 12, you know, three-year-olds is not going to exceed weight capacity. However, I'm sure if you're uncomfortable and you want to see that information, I'm sure that since this was a relatively recent addition, I'm assuming that, you know, information could be provided to you regarding, you know, the equipment, et cetera.
Well, the, I think we heard before also that the playground, because it's associated with the daycare, is going to be regulated by the state, right?
Yes.
It should come under the same inspections that a school come under.
So the requirement, or the condition that's going to be in our resolution, is that you're going to show that you've complied with state requirements.
Absolutely, sir. There will be another, more thorough inspection when we are at the, when we have received municipal approval, and therefore, we can go forward with applying for state license. At this point, the inspection done was simply a courtesy inspection. There will be a more thorough inspection.
Mr. Chairman, once again, I'm not concerned at all about the daycare facility and the use of the playground for those children. I'm concerned about school buses coming in with 25 or 50 kids, and a nice day, 50 kids that are sixth- to seventh graders, maybe, or eighth graders, going to use this equipment.
No, 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 no. Mr. Schneider?
It's only up to?
As a mom and someone who's had kids go, after-school daycare programs stop at fifth grade?
Or fifth grade.
At fifth grade. Am I, Mrs. Atkinson?
I thought it was sixth, right?
Fifth grade.
And if I, if I may, if I may?
Newberry School only goes up to fifth grade.
Right.
The playground was gifted to us by Game Time, which is the premier playground equipment manufacturer, installed by their manufacturer or their installers. It is up to every specification possible. Our children, my children? Our children, my children, have been playing on that playground now for quite some time. It is as sturdy as they come. If you go to a lot of the daycares, they have residential-grade playground equipment. They'll have wood equipment, they will have stuff that you'll find in a normal backyard. The equipment that's there, you will find it in state parks, you'll find it at Manitowoc Reservoir, it's the same manufacturer. Game Time is the premier manufacturer of playground equipment. While I understand the need to satisfy the board, also understand that I have a need to satisfy my constituents, our insurance company, you know, the members, if members of the church's children were harmed, that would affect us greatly. So everything we've done on this property has been something that I think that we could all be proud of, knowing that the property's well-kept, the grass is mowed every week, there are lawn sprinklers, the landscaping has done nice. Our goal has always been to have a first-class facility for the town, and that has not changed.
I understand that, Pastor. Going forward, I've been to your site, I saw the park, it is a beautiful park, and I'm sure it's sturdy, but you opened up a park for, how long now? How long is that park up?
At least a year and a half.
A year and a half. You're just now adding fencing. You're now just adding protective barriers. You're now just making provisions of how the kids are going to get to the park for the daycare. Meanwhile, kids have been using it, so...
But we don't have a daycare in operation.
I understand that, but the kids are still using it during, after Sunday Mass, or during sometime, because the kids do use it, you testified.
Yes.
So you didn't take no safety measures up until now? And, you know, I have a great concern for kids, I'm sure you do, too, but I just like moving forward that the protocol is followed.
Yes, sir.
There's rules.
Yes, sir.
Mr. De Castro, that's why we're here today.
I understand that. So that's why I'm just bringing these things up. I'm just bringing these things up. I just don't want it to sound like everything has been good in the past, so, that was my concern.
For the record, I've made a mistake.
And we all do, I understand that, trust me, I'm not, I'm not trying to --
We would like to correct it by, by putting this application in, by having it approved, and making sure that proper protocol is followed in the future. It's my error.
And just normally, just how we do, the process here is, normally we hear all the testimony, and then we would make comments on it. Unfortunately, this application didn't go that way. We just started jumping in, we never went through the --
I know, it's --
Actually, speaking to that issue, I would like to turn to Mr. De Falco to cover those issues if the board is comfortable with that.
Mr. Chair, before we go, Mr. Tantillo had been trying to comment, just want to remind board members, please use parliamentary procedures. Some people have been trying to get their points across and have not been recognized from the chair, and you need to be recognized before you speak.
Reverend Atkinson, I just, I mean, I'm all for this, I think it's a great thing, I think it's a great service to the children. I'm very concerned about children. It does bother me, though, that this application said daycare facility, and I would vote on a daycare facility, is, this after-school thing has got me. So, I would like that, put in a revision, that we're voting on a daycare center, not...
We're not voting on anything yet, no determination has been made on that point, so, but when we come to that, you can add that comment.
The other thing is, the signs, children at play or something outside, slow down, just caution signs. And the fence, that's a big thing with me. I would really like to see the fence at least six feet. Four feet is, I'm five foot nothing, and there's four foot, that's nothing. I would really like to see the fence up. That would make me really feel a lot better, and I'm sure, Mr. De Castro's kind of interested in that, but I'm sure that, that the children are not going to be unattended. I believe someone will be there all the time.
That is correct, sir.
Mr. Chair, before we just move forward with Mr. Tantillo's comment with the fence...
We need to move forward with the engineering testimony here, so, if your comments can hold off, I would appreciate that.
Well, I would just wanted to say, just, we don't even know if there's an ordinance for the fence size, so the four foot might be --
Again, right, you're absolutely right, and I don't know if the engineering report addresses that as well, so. Mr. De Falco, can we go through CME's engineering report and any comments, objections, anything that you agree or disagree?
Yes, before we even do that, one of the other issues that we are here for tonight is to relocate the existing sign. Briefly, the, just you can pass some of these out. The existing sign is a one-sided sign, which sits quite a bit off the road. The applicant is proposing to relocate it and turn it ninety degrees, so that it is visible from both directions of Oakland Road. The sign would be located out of the Ashto site triangle dimensions. There is, on the approved site plan, a Harold Township site plan triangle drawn, which bears no relationship to actual site distance. The sign would be sitting within that drawn triangle, but it would not obstruct any visibility in either direction, since we have a stop control, and the measure from the stopped vehicle does not, the sign does not block the vision from that vehicle stopped at the stop sign. So the proposal is to relocate the sign from its present location, which is just facing Oakland Road, turn it ninety degrees, and add a back face to it, so it says the same thing on both sides.
If my memory serves me correctly, we had extensive testimony on the sign, and because it's a lit sign, that it was put in that particular area where it was, based on, I think there was some public comment against that, and I could be wrong, but I'm almost positive, we heard testimony, there was quite a bit of discussion about the sign and it being lit and having it right on Oakland Road. And now to move the sign, I don't see the purpose, it's served, it's served its purpose all this time, right now.
Right.
I don't see what warrants the changing of the sign.
The other comment is that the new community design standard would allow the sign to be moved, and be closer to the road, and be lit. So, the ordinance that was adopted after the approval allows its relocation without variance.
I'll defer that to our planner for that.
You know, Mr. De Falco, Mr. Chairman, you know, that's not highway development area, that's a --
It's a residential.
It's a residential area. And I'm not sure residents in that area are going to, across the street are going to want --
That was the testimony.
Absolutely.
And that's why I believe the sign was there, so, but again, I'm going to defer to our planner for this, and I just don't see the reasoning for why the sign needs to be moved, since it's been in its current position for so many years, and it's served its purpose.
Before we do that, Mr. Chair, can we just mark that as A2, Mr. De Falco?
The photograph?
Yeah.
Yeah. You have one?
I believe Jen has it. So A2 will be a digital photograph of the, this is the existing sign on the property?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Go ahead.
Jennifer, did you want to comment on that?
I can comment on the actual location, but I haven't been able to ascertain, you know, whether or not the sign complies in terms of its size, because I just got the detail just now, and there's no dimensions on it. But the community design standards do permit a monument sign of that, that nature to be located at that particular setback fifteen feet. However, it doesn't necessarily say it can't be set back more than that. I mean, that's just the minimum, so, while Mr. De Falco is correct in saying that that particular part of the sign, as far as the location, is permitted, it doesn't necessarily negate the board's concern over the residential neighborhood, and that perhaps moving the sign back farther would be preferable, based on the residential nature of the community, so...
I guess that if I remember, the testimony was so that it would be not a hindrance to the, to the community, because it is a residential community.
It was granted variance relief to have the sign at all, because it's in a residential community. So you granted variance relief in that location because of the concerns of the residents, but also acknowledging that the site did need to be identifiable for passing motorists for safety reasons.
Mr. De Falco, if you want to continue, please, with testimony in the report.
Comment, page two of the CME report, 6A is the first comment, I guess. The applicant has not requested design waivers, however, the following relief appears necessary, section, Community Design Standard 188, 226G. All lots shall have private walkway access to a public sidewalk in the right-of-way. And it goes on to quote the standard. "We have an existing sidewalk which leads from the building down the access driveway and terminates at the curb return at the driveway with Oakland Road. Directly across the street is concrete sidewalk constructed as part of the Monmouth Writings subdivision. There are no sidewalks on the east side of Oakland Road either direction, and the highway bridge, which abuts the property to the north, has no sidewalk."
Now, Mr. De Falco, if my memory serves me, because I did the site inspection, there is painted walkways, right, on the parking lot? Isn't there painted crosswalks on the, in the, in the parking lot from where the sidewalks terminate? I know there's a sidewalk by the sign, isn't there?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and isn't there a painted striped walkway to take you from that sidewalk to the entryway of the church?
No, sir, there is, there is no painted sidewalk.
Now, the, the comment in the review letter talks about the public right-of-way sidewalk. So, we're asking if the, if there is relief needed, we're asking for the relief not to install sidewalks on our side of Oakland Road, since there are sidewalks directly across the street, accessible by the sidewalk, which we brought right out to Oakland Road at the curb return of the driveway.
Okay.
Comment?
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
The comment, 7A, which talks about the use, I think we've passed that already. 7B, we talked about who's using the facility, and again, the state licensing. 7C, we talked about the operational hours. There are no architectural changes to the building. There's no, in my opinion, there's no need for any plans, since we're not changing any of the building. Under F, circulation, we have a circular loop around the building, and parents will be dropping off, parking against the building, and walking children to the front door.
Rich, if I could just jump in real quick on two different things. One, I just want to confirm, then, those five classrooms currently exist within the church?
Yes, they do.
Okay. And secondly, we also talked about the buses making drop-offs. Where are the buses going to be dropping off? I know there's a circular loop, is the bus going to come in, stop at the loop, drop the kids off at the front of the church, and then leave, or is the bus going to circulate through the site?
I actually don't have a clue.
We would, at this point, we would most likely allow it to stay within the circle, drop the children off directly in front of the door, and have a staff member meeting them there, simply because they will not be parking there, it's simply a drop-off. Whereas with parents, we're going to be asking them to park their cars in a striped line, and walk their children in, and check them in and out.
So, is there enough distance for a school bus to come in through the driveway, loop right to the front of the building, and then loop around and go out?
They do it all year long.
Okay. All right.
We have become, we have become the transportation's best --
Turnaround.
Turnaround spot.
They use the site to do U-turns, basically, now, the Board of Ed does. And it probably would only be, what, two buses, maybe? I mean, not that many kids, so...
No. Maybe one.
Maybe one bus.
And then, really quick, also, just hopping back to the architecturals, there's going to be no side entrance, because the daycare is actually located to the rear of your building, so I want to confirm whether or not there's going to be an alternate entrance/exit, or is it strictly through the front?
The daycare's in the front of the building. The back of the building is the worship sanctuary.
Where are they going to enter? Are they going to enter from the front door that faces Oakland Road?
Yes.
And Rich, just, I hate to interrupt you, but could you just speak a little bit to where your employees are going to park, and where the drop-off for the parents is going to be? Because my understanding is that, you know, parents have to actually physically walk these kids into the building, they can't just drop them off on the circle. So, are they going to, are there going to be designated spaces for drop-off, or, you know, is it just kind of wherever you can find a space, kind of situation?
It's wherever you can find a space, and there's plenty of them, and the teachers will be directed to park on the outer perimeter, not against the sidewalk. So there's, there's the inner perimeter, which has about, maybe fifty or sixty spaces, and the outer perimeter might have, you know, ninety or so spaces. The sidewalk abuts the building, that's where they dropped off. There will be no marked spaces, but the entire perimeter around the building is ample parking for the drop-off and pickup. Any employees would park, not against that sidewalk, but on the opposite side at the perimeter of the parking lot. The access to the playground, I discussed briefly, with a portable mobile barrier to stop any traffic that would be in that parking lot at the time children are walking across.
Hold on, Rich, there's more to that comment?
I'm still reading it, yeah. Storage will be in the building. It's lightweight and can be wheeled right into the building. There probably will not be any infants on the playground, it's not meant for infants. If you see the pictures out there, there's a slide, there's a climbing, there's a, like a teeter-totter, and infants in those type of playgrounds don't mix, so, this is mostly for the older kids, maybe the four-year-olds might venture out there, but the little kids, I don't see them even go in there, one, two-year-olds, it's just too big for them to even use that. And as far as marking the site and depressed curbs along the route, this site, it does have curbing around the back of the building. And I don't, I don't think that there'll be the occasion where there'll be the need for a handicap ramp, but if that was the occasion, there is a handicap ramp located right near the door, the front of the building, and that child would be escorted in that direction, down the ramp. Adequacy of parking on the site, I think we talked about that. It's adequate parking for the use intended during the early and the time of the day that it's being used, not in conflict with any other activity at the church.
Rich, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't hear you correctly, the rear portion of the parking lot, prior to them entering the playground area, there's the press curb there, I know there's the press curb prior to, is there actually a depressed curb when you come across the parking area?
Across the parking area? I'm not sure, I'm not aware you're pointing --
Prior to you entering, before you would hit the planners, is there a depressed curb?
No. There is not depressed curb there. Not for pedestrians, there's a drainage depressed curb, but not, not for a wheelchair access,
We would just recommend the board consider maybe the need for a depressed curb there, because you're going to have children walking across, as well as coming back, they're going to have a step-down.
When you mean depressed curb, you mean like one that goes right down to the...
Yeah, depressed curb, instead of having a full-face eighteen-inch curb, it depresses down, so you have a smaller lip.
Is there any objections to that?
Well, there's a curb around the playground, too, I mean, it's got the woodchips on the other side of a curb, they have to cross the playground.
I guess worried about children falling or tripping over that curb. I mean, you're going to have, you know, maybe the current members of the church are familiar with that, and, but now this being, I'm sure maybe the state might even require that, I'm just saying, I don't know, but...
Can we leave it to the state? If the state makes us do, we'll do it, but, I mean, there's curbs everywhere, kids know how to walk up curbs, it's not, it's something they have to learn.
Well, we're just looking at, you know, what about handicap folks, you know? What happens if you have a children, a child that's handicapped? How are you going to accommodate them? Are you going to discriminate them against that as well?
No, I'm sure there'll be...
Mr. De Falco, come on, that's just a...
There'll be a special...
That was, I don't, I don't, I don't appreciate that comment, that children know how to go up and down curbs, that's not something they need to learn. That was uncalled for.
There's curbs around the playground, is all I meant to say, and... There's curbs around the playground, is all I meant to say. It's existing, it's typical of any playground that has a curb. Every park has a curb. It's not unusual, is all I meant.
We would leave that up to the board to determine. It was merely a question of accessibility.
I'll hear the board's comments after we finish the report.
There's no lighting proposed for the playground. It is not used at nighttime, after hours.
And if I could just briefly touch on the lighting, we had received some concerns, when this application was previously heard, we talked about lighting. Again, it's in a residential area. There was specific discussion regarding timing, when it was going to be shut off. We have received some correspondence indicating that lights are operating at night, and we would obviously ask, I believe it's in violation of the previous approval, because they were specific to timers, that were going to be put on those lights, and that the lights were not going to be operating in the evening.
If I may, the lighting is on timers, and it's set to shut off at 10 o'clock in the evening.
My concern is, in the wintertime, when it starts getting dark at 4:30 in the afternoon, what are you going to do then? Is that, you're not going to permit children out to the play area, or are all children going to be inside after 4:00? How is that going to be addressed in the lighting issue with that?
Chairman, generally, that timing, when it starts getting early, that seems to coincide with the winter as well. So, it's unlikely that the children would be out at that time, but certainly, again, it's an issue, the state is going to inspect it, and if they have recommendations in that regard, we'll adhere to them.
The only thing I can do is confirm that the lights are on timers. I believe our former resolution gave us to 10:00 PM. If there is a malfunction of the timer, I don't live on the site. Personally, I cannot say that I've ever received, or my staff have received, a phone call saying that they've been left on. It wouldn't benefit us, the price of energy, you know? Why would we leave it on all night? And in terms of it getting darker earlier, the parking lot lights come on earlier, but they don't exceed 10:00 PM. And in terms of taking the children out, we don't intend to light the playground area. It's not something that we want to do.
Okay, so the playground area is not going to be lit?
We don't intend to, we have no plans on doing it. I don't believe that the state would even ask us to do that.
Okay.
And as far as buffering of the playground, there is no proposal to add any additional buffering, as it's sitting in the woods and tucked back off the roadway and behind the parking lot. It's pretty much out of sight where it is. The relocation of the sign, we did speak about.
Well, Rich, if you could, if you can just demonstrate that there's adequate site distance, I understand that you indicated in your testimony that you're outside of the Ashville line, in recognizing the fact that this is within a Howell Township Site Triangle, which is more restrictive, and if you could just talk about the character of Oakland Road, and demonstrate that if, in fact, the board was inclined to grant you approval, to relocate this sign, that they're not going to have any site distance problems.
The site distance requirement that Howell has in their ordinance far exceeds the federal standard, which is the golden rule that is used by the RSIS and by most towns. The rule of thumb is that from the curb line of the traveled way, you measure back 15 feet to a point where the driver of a vehicle would stop his car, and then proceed to look both directions to see if it's safe to exit the roadway. The sign is located 15 feet beyond the right-of-way line, which is approximately 10 feet from the curb line, placing the sign about 25 feet back from the curb line. The driver who stops at the stop sign is closer than 25 feet from the edge of road. Maybe he's five, maybe he's 10 feet from the curb line, but he's not behind 25 feet. So, the sign itself is not an obstruction. The fact that it's falling within Howell's prescribed dimensioned site triangle doesn't mean that it's not a safe exiting movement. There's adequate visibility, and the triangle is an arbitrary dimension that has no bearing on safety or on visibility. The Howell's ordinance is meant for the site clearing, to provide adequate clearing at the intersection, but once you stop and have the distance that this plan shows clear of the sign to see, and plus the sign is a low sign, but you have adequate distance between the curb line and the sign, that it does not block any visibility.
Mr. Chair, I just have some questions on that, because I don't, this board can't allow something to go into Howell's site triangle. That easement is held in the public benefit, and it has its own restrictions, and to allow something in the site triangle that's not there, you're going to actually have to go to court under the SUSA decision and change that, because it's held within the public trust.
I don't think the easement was ever dedicated to Howell. It was proposed to be dedicated, but the Engineering Department, on all these applications recently, as well as in the past, like Coptic Church, all these that have site triangles at driveways, the town doesn't want them. Town does not want to have the responsibility of owning that easement right. So, they haven't been accepting them. They're shown graphically in accordance to the dimensions that the ordinance requires, but the township has not been accepting private easements. If this was a subdivision, it was a corner lot, yes, there'd be a township site triangle easement on the corner lot, but a private driveway easement has not been one of the ones the town is going after.
Then what you're saying is there is no easement?
There's no dedicated easement that I'm aware of.
But there's a restriction somewhere in the?
The ordinance tells us to draw the lines where we drew them, and it tells us that we can't plant anything taller than 36 inches in that same triangle.
Okay.
To that end, members of the board, I wanted just Mr. DeFalco to put that testimony on the record, that in fact, the sign is not going to impose any site restrictions, and I would agree with his testimony.
I just want to remind the applicant that it is 10:30. This board will not go past 11:00 PM, so any testimony, if we can speed it up and try to get out at a reasonable hour would be appreciated.
Mr. Chair, I'd also just remind the board that we do have.
Executive session?
Oh, yes.
Well, then, I don't know if we can continue this until 11 o'clock at night, because we do not want to make judgments. All these folks are volunteers, they're all professionals, they all have jobs, and we don't want to make judgments that are going to jeopardize or benefit the town at late hours.
Chairman, he's just about done with the review letter.
How much longer do you think?
I have two minutes, not even. The only change to the sign is to add a backside to the sign, as it's discussed before.
Mr. Chairman, the sign, they're considering moving the sign, flipping it, and moving it forward. You're going to remove the electricity from, and illumination of that sign, then, if you're bringing it forward closer to residential property, correct?
I don't know. I'm sure they're going to continue to keep it lit. I'll reserve my comments about the sign after the testimony's over, but.
Mr. Chair, I just want the board to know that I haven't received any details on the sign until tonight, and it was really just a photo, so I can't even advise the board as to whether or not the sign complies to the community design standards, or, you know, if any waivers are required for the size of the sign, et cetera. And I also just want to clarify something that I said earlier with respect to the setback of that sign. That 15-foot setback is specific to commercial areas, and while this is not a residential use, it is in a residential zone, so I just wanted the board to be aware of that fact as well.
Thank you. Yes.
Clearly, the board has issues with the sign. My client is willing to withdraw its application to move the sign.
Okay.
All right, next.
Thank you.
L is the compliance with the resolution, including the monumentation of conservation units. That has been done. The monuments have been set through the woods, as per the Howell Engineering Department's approval. Laura, 223 to 233, is there anything in there that, you said generally, compliance with those conditions? Is there anything in there specifically that you?
No, basically, for the board's purposes, and I would defer comment to Jennifer, when this application was approved, the community design standards weren't in effect, so you didn't have the architectural treatments or facade requirements that you do now. So, it's just more or less, you know, letting the board be aware that this building, per se, doesn't comply with those community design standards.
And I just want to add to that, there are specific provisions for the location of parking, you know, no parking in the front yard, et cetera. The parking field is in existing condition, so, you know, waiver relief will be required for the parking location. So, that was just enumerated in our letter, but it is in existing condition, the applicant's not proposing that.
Right. All right, so, to the extent that we need waivers from those standards, because this is an existing building, an existing site that was built before those standards were adopted, we are seeking those waivers or variances. Under N, I think we are exempt from?
I've confirmed with Ms. Fullaway that we are exempt from any.
We're exempt from the affordable housing contribution. Outside agency approvals, the county planning board has no issue on this, it's not a county road. The county Board of Health, there's no new kitchen being constructed. We're on sewer, there's no county health department review needed. I know the state will probably tie in their review, but there's no county Board of Health approval that I'm aware of. It's already sewered and watered. No new improvements are proposed at all to this site plan. The shade tree commission, again, this is a fully approved site plan, bonded, installed, I think, off the bond, Reverend?
We're working on it.
Still working on getting off the bond, but all the shade trees have been planted and landscaping installed, as per the plan.
And, Rich, as it relates, have you made applications to these agencies?
Initially, the Monmouth County Planning Board said no comment, it's not in the jurisdiction. We do have the county Board of Health approval for the original building, and again, water and sewer has been approved.
Just make sure you submit those applications that we have in the file.
Applications to who?
You said you got a letter from the county that they don't have jurisdiction.
The county planning board, yes.
Submit that, so it's in the file.
That's an exhibit already.
Okay.
So, it says it's an exhibit, but I'm happy to supply it as well.
And that's all that we have.
Any questions, professionals, any? All right, any questions before we open this up to the public for public comment? CNN say, anybody from the public have any comment? Please come forward. Mr. Smith, please.
Mr. Smith, do you swear from the testimony you're about to give this board's the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Just please state and spell your name for the record, and give us your address.
Don Smith, 54 Vandevere Road. I would ask if the applicant would consider putting up signs in the parking area where the children are going to be dropped off, directing the driver to shut the engine off and remove the keys from the ignition. Two-fold purpose, emissions, and the other thing, all too often, I've seen where people rush into a parking spot, shove it into reverse, get out, run in with their kid, and lo and behold, it wasn't in park. And a number of those instances did happen at daycare centers. Thank you.
Members of the board, our client has indicated his willingness to issue memos to all new parents of enrollees to that precisely.
I think the testimony was a sign, proper sign.
I think no idling sign, I think, is what they're looking for.
How do we enforce it?
How many signs, 15?
Yes, Mr. DeFalco, 50.
I know, I do think we need to keep in mind that this is a church facility, so I think that's what the concern is here.
How do I enforce it? I don't think they're asking you to enforce it, I think they're asking you to reasonably inform the people that are there that there are DEP requirements regarding.
We would be happy to put that in all the paperwork.
Yeah, I'm not saying a sign, outside sign is necessary, but as people who are going to use this facility, use the daycare, that they are aware that no idling, that you should turn off your car when you're bringing your children in, you know, and not leave it running, you know, even if you're running late.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So, what I'm hearing is, your client would be willing to subscribe to Title 39, then?
Wait a second, before we do that, I have to, before we get back to our testimony, it is still open to the public, is there anybody else from the public that wishes to be heard? All right, CNN, I'm going to close public comment, Mr. Sarri.
I'm sorry, is that required, that that sign be posted?
No, that you would allow our law enforcement officials, if necessary.
I think you're talking about two different things.
Yeah, I'm a little confused.
One, the Title 39 is that you're asking, he's asking for Title 39 to allow our law enforcement to enforce, you know, traffic laws within your property.
How do we get to that?
The second is that there was a request from Mr. Smith, I don't think the board has opined on it yet, but it was a request from Mr. Smith that a sign be posted in the parking lot, just letting everyone know that there's no idling.
Would you have any objection to the sign being posted on the entryway into the church facility versus being right up against the back of the church structure?
Well, I want to hear the board's feelings on, is a sign saying no idling absolutely necessary, or is it better if the church inform those using the daycare facility not to leave their cars idled in the parking lot?
I'd like to get the board's consensus on that.
My consensus, I would prefer to have them notice the people, the applicant, people coming in, that there is no idling of the car, and they should shut the car off before they go in. The signage, you know, put a sign in front of every parking space or whatever, I think that could get a little out of hand, and I don't know that people would actually see the signs. I think the notification to the parents would be enough, and possibly remind them if you see violations from time to time. A little common sense goes a long way.
Thank you.
I concur.
And then, Mr. Chairman, on the Title 39.
I'm sorry, sir, I think I missed the comment with regard to this.
Well, if there's someone that's idling in your parking lot for a long period of time, I would like to be able, for your client to be able to call law enforcement, let them come and issue a ticket.
Certainly.
We agree.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other comment, questions, concerns, board members and professionals?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I can reiterate that I'm perfectly content with this operation of a daycare facility. I am not comfortable with this other program.
My comment is that, since this is heavily regulated by the state, I am not in deep concern that they do offer an after-school, after-care, or after-school program and the daycare, because the states are going to, the state's going to be more restrictive. And I think we have to, you know, understand that the state is not going to be lax when it comes to the care of kids, so I'm not objecting granting them that request.
Mr. Chair, also, just to reiterate my prior statement, both are permitted accessory uses to a church.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve this application.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just interject real quick, and I apologize. Where was the board on the sidewalk? Were you in favor of granting the waiver of no sidewalk along Oakland Road?
Yeah, I mean, any other board member? Because I know there's an existing sidewalk that runs past the sign to Oakland, but not along Oakland, you know, and I don't necessarily feel we need to burden this applicant with that, but that's just my personal opinion.
I agree. I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Burgess and Schneider. Burgess made the motion, Mr. Schneider second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Frazi?
Yes.
Mr. Sayet?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
I'd like to know if these things are going to be put in the resolution about the fence and stuff.
Won't the fence be predicated by the state's requirements and not our own?
May I just say, Mr. Tantillo, we're willing to consider the six-foot fence, as long as the state doesn't object to it. We're willing to agree to put it.
That's not anything I can incorporate into the resolution, that we're going to consider things, and it may or may not happen.
We're willing to agree to the six-foot fence, so long as the state doesn't have an issue with it. That's what I'm saying.
Well, I don't think the state's going to object to that.
As long as they don't, then it will be a six-foot fence.
And one other thing, I just got to get it clear, how many children will be all together with after-care and daycare? What would the max be?
We can't give you that, Mr. Tantillo. We can't. We can't give you the maximum. We can't tell you the precise number that the state's going to let us have, only that we will obviously adhere to the standards set forth by the state.
Is there a maximum?
Wait a second, Mr. Tantillo. I just want to go back to that for a second. You guys made some very specific representations that you were never going to get to the number where we were going to need a traffic, a traffic count, and also based upon the square footage, you seem to know how many students, so you really ballparked it for us.
Right, and we believe that's accurate.
So I don't understand why you wouldn't be able to answer Mr. Tantillo's question. We know it's between 50 and 55 for the daycare, and...
And that's accurate.
I know, but what he's asking for is to, a ballpark number for the after-care, so he can add the two together.
My client is ballparking at 25 for the after-care.
25, so you're talking total, you're going to have what?
75 to 80?
75. And this is in five rooms you're going to use? So if it's raining, they can't go outside? Is that right?
I believe it's more than five.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Tantillo, the five rooms that we were discussing is dedicated to the daycare.
That's for daycare.
Directly. There are additional rooms available for the after-school.
Okay, so they'll be gone when the after-school comes.
Right.
Okay, so you've got 70. And this is all, I'm sorry to take up your time, but...
Not a problem.
Things have to be asked. Did the fire department put sign up for how many people can be in there, or how many children could be in there? You do have a sign up saying how many?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And what does it say?
The fire department is very specific in terms of the overall allowable occupation, which is 351.
Total, okay.
Total people permitted in the building at any one time.
Okay. My vote's yes.
What's your vote?
Yes. Okay.
Mr. Vislacki?
Yes.
Mr. McCastro?
I'm voting no on this, not because I don't think it's a good idea, but just with the testimony that was given, the confusion that I had with the rooms, the traffic, and quite frankly, I just hope that the safety of the children, the movement in the parking lot, when you do move them around, gets addressed. I'm sure you're concerned with the kids, but for my clarification, it wasn't addressed, so I'm voting no.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
I just wanted to comment that paragraph 10 of the original approving resolution did indicate that the Reverend was very candid at the time when they gave up the school application, that in the event they proposed a school or something else, that they would come back before the board, and I appreciate that they're here tonight to follow appropriate protocol to do this, and I vote yes. Thank you.
Application is approved.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate it.
Chairman, Estevos, do you want to, should we have a motion to adjourn at the executive? Motion.
We have to read the resolution first.
Okay. Go ahead.
Executive session.
Yes, you are.
Whereas Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 13 of the New Jersey Revised Statute requires that the public shall not be excluded from any meetings of a public body unless a resolution authorizing such exclusion is adopted at a public meeting. And whereas the planning board of the Township of Howell has determined that such a closed meeting is required to discuss certain matters which are exempted from consideration with the public in attendance under New Jersey Revised Statute 10:4-12, namely, release of executive session minutes regarding Elon Associates versus Howell Township at all. Now therefore be it resolved by the planning board of the Township of Howell that the public shall be excluded from the next portion of this meeting, and the planning board will reconvene in public session thereafter. Be it further resolved that minutes will be kept of the meeting in closed session and the time and circumstances under which the discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public or cannot be determined at this time.
Do we have a, do you have a roll call for executive? Do we have to go have a roll call, or is it just?
Yes.
Roll call for...
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Frazee?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Vislacki?
Yes.
Mr. McCastro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Chairman Estevos? Board will now reconvene. All right, we'll be quick. Where's the chairman?
Where'd he go?
He went to your chairman. He went to the... I'm not the chairman.
He's sitting on his lap.
Man, they're ready to put me in your grave.
Okay, do I need to reconvene?
Just state that we're reconvening.
We're reconvening. We're back from executive session. We had a dis...
Mr. Chairman, as the resolution to go into executive session stated, we are considering release of executive session minutes for 2007 and 2008 for Elon Associates via Howell Township and the Howell Township Planning Board. A request had been made last Wednesday pursuant to the Open Public Records Act for those documents, and within the seven-day period, as required by Oprah, a response was given that they were not capable of being released at the moment because they were subject to the exclusions of attorney-client privilege in the Open Public Records Act, as well as the exclusions to discuss litigation contained in the Open Public Meetings Act, and the board had not yet voted to release those minutes. The letter also indicated that the board would be considering that matter on the very next night, which is tonight, the 17th. I have looked through all of the executive session minutes in pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Records Act, as well as the cases interpreting that act. I have gone through to redact those portions that are subject to the exclusions I talked about before. So for those minutes, if the discussion regarding Elon concerned attorney-client privilege, they were redacted. If the discussion was subject to the exclusion in the Open Public Meetings Act, I redacted it, and those two exclusions really overlap with each other. If you have one, in most instances, you have the other. Areas where there was discussion sort of on history, on factual matters, things like that, they were not redacted. They were left in. There were some executive session minutes where multiple topics were discussed, some of them personnel, some of them litigation and other matters. In those instances, those matters were also redacted. Pursuant to the Open Public Records Act, there will be an explanation that accompanies the transcripts, which goes through the dates of each transcript and an explanation, including, excuse me, statutory references as to why certain pages were redacted. I believe that the board in doing this has satisfied the, its statutory requirements under the Open Public Records Act, and the next step would be for the board to vote to release the redacted executive session minutes. In doing that, I would just say that I need another day or so to go over with a black pen again some of those pages and make sure that the redacted portions are completely redacted, not visible when a reader takes a look at it. And that will be sent out to the demander, once the demander, there will be some sort of fee that's generated for the reproduction costs, and once all the money is paid, it will be sent out.
Mr. Cuchero, so it's your opinion that the redactions made from the executive session minutes are warranted and meet the requirements of the Open Public Records Act?
Yes, they fall within the exclude, two exclusions within the Open Public Records Act. One exclusion, which is specifically in the act, is for matters that are within the attorney-client privilege. The second exclusion makes reference to the fact that it's also subject to any exclusion in any other statute, and the one that is most commonly referred to is the Open Public Meetings Act, which has an exclusion for the public for matters relating to pending or existing litigation, which this was at the time.
And was this request for a specific item, and were items that didn't apply to the request redacted?
The, well, the request was for all executive session minutes where the board attorney discussed Elon versus Howell Township for the years 2007 and 2008.
And anything that was discussed in executive session that didn't apply to Elon was redacted from the minutes?
Correct. There were certain executive session where personnel matters or litigation concerning other cases were being discussed, and those are being redacted as well, and the explanation is there as well that those particular pages, and we refer to page, pages between, you know, one and whatever, are being redacted because they applied to personnel matters and they applied to this other case.
Thank you. I'll open it up to comments for board members. Does anybody have any comments related to this issue?
I just want to... Mrs. Dalton? Just so, thank you, Mr. Chair. So it's clear that we've, our attorney has made the review of the minutes, and that the members of the board had a very brief opportunity to just sort of peruse the minutes to see what Mr. Cuchero did, but we're relying upon your judgment.
You are, and I would say once again that if anyone wants a longer period to take a look at it, you know, let me know, and certainly, you know, all opportunity is there for you if you want to avail yourself of it.
Okay. Any other comments? I would like to entertain a motion regarding the release of these minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to release these minutes as redacted by Mr. Cuchero and in accordance with all applicable laws.
Second.
I don't think you can. Somebody else has a second.
I think I got a second from Mr. Tantillo. So it's Mr. Sayre and Mr. Tantillo. Thank you, gentlemen. Roll call.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Frazee?
Yes.
Mr. Sayet?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislacki?
Yes.
Mr. McCastro?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Chairman Estevos?